Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call the order. The City of Two Rivers City Council meeting for Monday, April 5th, 2021. Can you please all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jamie, roll call, please.
Kurt Andrews.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Kate Coach.
Here.
John Cassavant.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Jay Remicker.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
We're going to skip number four because we're all here. Let's go to number five, which is the public hearing. A public hearing tonight is on zoning code ordinance text amendment to allow small wind energy systems in interior side yards and street side yards as conditional use in 1-2 industrial district or I-2 industrial district. Already on conditional use in rear yards in that district. We're looking for both the front and the side. We're looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance, and then we'll go right into the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Bill. We're going to go into the public hearing and how this is going to work. We're going to do it two ways. One is we're going to talk to the folks inside of the building, and there's going to be three calls. What I need you to do is go up to where Greg's standing, that podium, my right, your left, and give your name and address, and let us know what you're thinking about. And then after we get done with our three calls, we'll go on the phones and repeat the same thing. So again, it's a public hearing on the zoning code ordinance text amendment to allow small wind energy systems in interior side and street side yards as conditional use.
And Mr. President, before the first public comment, if perhaps our city planning director, community development director, might walk the council and the public through what the change entails.
That'd be great. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Just briefly, what has been requested is to amend Section 10-116 of our small wind energy systems and commercial wind energy systems, which is simply just modifying the location of where they are allowed via a conditional use. So we are modifying the existing ordinance to target the location, and so they are currently allowed in the rear yard of industrial districts, institutional and public facility districts, and conservancy districts. And that's in the italicized areas of the ordinance modification in your packet. And so we have updated that to where they're allowed and then shall be located in the rear yard, like I mentioned, the interior side yard and street side yard in the I-2 industrial district. So this is very specific to our industrial park area only. And so for those of you, if you need a visual, which sometimes I do, to help identify where exactly we're talking about, what the side yard is and what the street side yard. So up here, we have the front yard. This represents a building, and this is just a road, and that's a road there to the north. That would be the street side yard, and this would be what's called an interior side yard. And so the ordinance is suggesting here for your approval tonight after the public hearing, where the new locations to be added, they would be allowed in the side yard here, that side yard not allowed in the front, and that's how it is now, and they are currently allowed in the rear yard of this hypothetical building. So that's the modification that we have before you tonight for your consideration following the public hearing process.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And one other thing that they should know about is it should be setback from the property lines, correct? That's still in the existing ordinance, no matter what side they're on. That does not change.
Correct. That does not change. That's not changing at all. That's just to provide a context for you within the zoning ordinance as it is.
Okay, thank you. So let's do the first call. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address. The mic is on, I believe. Correct, Jamie? Or Elizabeth? Okay, thank you. And let's do the first call right now for the public hearing. Second call.
First, is this just for this one, or can this be?
Yes, that one, sir.
Just for this one?
Yes.
I'm out of turn.
Okay, no problem. We'll have you back up on input for public. And third call for the public hearing on the zoning code ordinance. Okay, seeing no one coming up, let's go to the phones. Jamie, are you ready for that? All right. If you're out there on television land or Facebook land, the phone number is 920-793-5534. That's 920-793-5534. Again, please call in. We'll do a first call. And third and final call. Okay, thank you. We are... Look, any other discussion on this before we go to roll call vote on this ordinance change that Elizabeth just walked us through, guys? Adam?
What is the reason that somebody wants this, and where is this located for this conditional use permit?
The reason to modify this ordinance was a request for a zoning text amendment. We don't have site plans for the specific location yet for this location, but if someone interested in a small wind energy system...
Do we know how tall they're going to be and what the fall zone is?
There's a maximum height that you have in the packet for that, and it's 170... Oh, I'm... And maybe if you don't have the whole ordinance, I'm sorry, it's 170 feet. That's the maximum height of the small wind energy system, and that is something they have to comply with. Before that can even happen, they have to apply for a conditional use permit. So this is only modifying where they would be allowed for them to apply for a conditional use for the specific location of siting a small wind energy system.
So this is not for anybody in the I-2 industrial district? Is that correct?
Not currently there, no.
So if we agree to this, it would be allowed for anyone to obtain a conditional use permit?
If they then come back with a conditional use, and then you would review that with their site plan, knowing exactly where it would be, and it would have to comply with the fall zone compliance, which is 1.1 times the height of the tower that they would be proposing from properties and from power lines and from right-of-way, which is the existing code that we have in place.
Okay.
And it will come before the plan commission, before it comes to you as well.
Thanks for clarifying. Any other discussion, any questions? Okay, thank you, guys. Jamie, you want to go ahead and do a roll call?
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
John Cassavant.
Aye.
Kate Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Yes.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Okay, thank you, guys. Let's move on to number six, input from the public. So Jeff, if you are so ready to get up there, you can do that if you'd like to. We're going to go ahead and just go... Let's do other items first, or you want to do the petition from the property owners regarding the street widening. What would you prefer, Greg?
All I would suggest is we don't mix the two. Number of people here tonight, they're familiar faces that are probably here to talk about 24th Street. So if you want to go with Mr. Dahlke, if it's not about 24th Street, or anyone else on other topics, however you prefer.
Okay, we got... Thank you for clarifying. We have a lot of people here regarding that. So we're... Let's talk first about the request and the petition from property owners and tenants on 24th Street requesting the street to be widened. The recommended action is a motion to affirm the prior decision to rebuild the street at its current width. So we'll talk... We'll focus strictly on that. And Greg, if you could walk us through where we are. One of the reasons why we elected not to widen it initially last time was because of trying to save the trees. But since then, there's been a lot of evaluation of the existing trees. A lot of trees have been removed. And you want to walk us through what's still left?
Sure.
If we don't widen, and what would happen if we did widen?
Yep. I guess, you know, first of all, this project had originally been planned for 2020 construction season. We deferred to this year. It was designed by engineering and bid out for a widening from the current width of 28 feet to 32 feet throughout. 32 is probably more consistent with most of the streets in this area, although there are some other 28-footers. There's some 36-foot wide streets, like 27th Street, that was done a few years ago. Frankly, I think Mr. McDonald would agree as well, especially in an older neighborhood where you do have, in some areas, quite a few mature trees, and other areas, you don't. This would have been a much better topic to have more dialogue on early on rather than now. But where we are tonight, we brought the bids to City Council for award on March 15. The council also held the public hearing that night on special assessments for the project. Heard from a good number of citizens at that meeting that expressed concerns about the additional loss of trees that was... Would be a reality with the wider street. I think it's fair to say we also heard folks commenting that taking the terraces from seven and a half to five and a half feet, while that's still a plantable terrace width, would be less accommodating of healthy street trees. And the council, I think, trying to be responsive to the number... To the folks that were in the audience and were responsive on that issue, directed staff, approved the contract, but directed staff to proceed with a change order to change this project to provide for the reconstruction at the existing width of 28 feet. At a public information meeting the week before last, I think it's fair to say we heard from a number of people there that expressed a desire for the street to be widened. And then last week, Wednesday, the petition that was in your packets was delivered here to City Hall, and we forwarded that to the council. One thing I would point out, this map tries to do a lot of things. Yes, sir?
The first meeting I came to?
Yeah.
We agreed to have 32 wider street.
Okay.
And everything was good, and then the next meeting, you guys changed.
Okay.
We complained about it.
Duly noted.
So the people who came to your first meeting, they thought it was going to be...
Yep. There was one information meeting where it was presented correct. The plan is to widen it to 32.
Yeah, and that's why everybody took it that way. So now, also the...
Yep. Yep, okay. Thank you for that correction. Thank you. So what this map intends to show is the blue dots represent the properties where generally they were owners. It might have been one property where it was tenants, based on different names, but represent the properties that were included on the petition council received, a total of 17 properties, and where they are located on the project. As it relates to the discussion about trees, the red trees have already been removed, and they number 15. Now, some of them were removed because they would have to because of the street being reconstructed to existing width, but several were also ash trees, and our consulting arborist said Emerald Ashbor is likely going to get them ultimately, take them out now. There was one tree that after an extended discussion, the conclusion was it was a hazardous tree. That's been removed. I believe there was one black walnut where the property owner's adjacent, and black walnuts have kind of a bad reputation for how they affect other vegetation or cars if they're parked under them. That one was removed. But the ones shown in red, that's... Those are locations where trees have been removed. Yellow represents, in engineering's best judgment, the additional trees that would need to be removed if the council directs the street go to 32 feet, the original design proposal. And you see, those are mostly at the far west end of the street from Monroe to Forest or the far east end of the street from Jefferson to Washington. And then the green trees, in engineering's best judgment, stay in any event. So that's kind of the lay of the land there. I would point out, the council's options are not solely to widen the whole street from Forest Avenue to Jefferson from 28 to 32, or don't narrow it. It would also be possible to make a break at a determined point during... Within the course of the project, depending on what your thoughts are, depending on what you hear tonight from folks that are here. I would point out, and I know our city engineer's in agreement on this, there is a good argument that this block, the easternmost block from Jefferson to Washington, is different in character in a lot of ways. It still is retaining a good number of mature trees. There may be folks here tonight that want to express an opinion. The petition that came in didn't have any signatures from anybody in this block, so there is a good argument for considering keeping that block at 28 feet. In terms of there being larger lots and people maybe wanting more of a terrace, there's an argument to be made in the next one to the west up to Adams. You do have a letter tonight from the property owner here at 2402. That's in front of you, just came in today, expressing oppos... Excuse me, opposition to the widening, feeling it would get rid of too many trees. I would note, every street tree in that block has been removed except the two adjacent to 2402 Washington, and that... Those two would stay in either event. Pretty extensive feedback from the folks in the two blocks to the west, from Adams to Forest. They want the street widened. I'm going to say that's not unanimous. I've heard from at least one resident in that area that wasn't voicing a concern about trees, but expressing a concern about the traffic calming that the narrower street has as an effect, and that widening the street to facilitate traffic flow might mean that people are going to drive faster. I'm not here to argue that tonight. Probably a good observation. So that's a quick summary. I guess if you would, if I could, just to illustrate at least that easternmost block of the project, and I think you'll see... You'll hear from some folks here tonight. This is starting from Jefferson Street at the far east, heading west, just for that one block. And that is city manager's cell phone simply placed, held on the dash, driving safely down the closed street. I posted it to my Facebook today so I could then download it here. My daughter gave me heck with a text message. But as you head... As you head west, large number of trees here just south of the house at Washington and 24th. One tree over there, that's heaved the sidewalk, but we think it's a good tree. We want to work around it. And then the lady whose letter you have at 2402 Washington, the house here, those are her trees that engineering believes would stay in place either way. But hopefully that's helpful. That is by far, again, from Jefferson headed west, the most treed block on the project. And the two trees that are going to be removed for that... From that street, at least for the 28-foot project without widening, have been removed. If the project goes with widening in this block, there would be six more street trees go away. And then, again, beyond Ms. Zalinski's two trees that she referenced in her letter.
Can you pause right there, Greg?
Right there. Try. There you go. Is that okay?
Yeah. So the view beyond that is the rest of the street from Washington Street all the way down, as far as you can see.
The rest of that block is with any street trees.
And there's hardly any trees on there anyway, correct?
Correct.
I mean, just one or two, really, from this view. We also agreed as council that we would, if we widened it, we would go back and whatever trees were removed, we said we'd try to make sure that we can plant new trees working with the neighbors, correct?
Yep.
We would try to make sure we plant... Now, again, they're not going to be as big as these, but they'll at least will put some forestry back into that... The street, because right now it's pretty desolate with the trees we had to take out and the trees that would have to come out if you widened it, right?
Yep. And by the way, the other thing we did check on as staff, the one cost we see with going with the widening now, because the forestry subcontract will have to be in twice, there might be a small upcharge there. The other thing, if the council were to go with two pavement widths instead of one, which I guess I'm advocating and Mr. McDonald's advocating, there would be a cost because the concrete paving sub would have to either bring in two different paving machines or set... There'd be a setup charge, and the estimate we got on that was $15,000. That's a big number, but in the context of about a $2 million project, it... We'll run into other $15,000 issues on it. So thinking that might be helpful by... For reference, I'll be quiet so you can hear from the folks here tonight.
Okay, great. So I'm looking for public input, please, to come up to the podium. Again, state your name and address, and we're on this particular subject right now, which is the widening or not widening of 24th Street, and you can see it by the map there. So, thank you. And we're going to try to time it so we got a lot of people here, about three minutes to five minutes, maybe three minutes. Darla, you got that? Darla, keep track of it, Doris. Thank you.
My outside voice. Yep, no problem. My name's Shannon Derby. I live at 1713 24th Street, and I really feel that there's many reasons that our street needs to be widened, and it's looking at other things other than just the trees, or maybe that somebody's going to speed down our street, which already happens. Full-size pickup trucks have a hard time navigating through our street when there's cars parked on either side. We have to wait and, you know, pull over to the side, wait for somebody else to come through. A lot of times, they're fast... They're driving fast because they think they're making somebody else wait. It's just the way it is on our street, and it doesn't have to be that way. If it was 32 feet instead of 28 feet, we'd have much safer traffic flow for everybody. I know some people are concerned about the trees. I am very much an advocate for nature usually, but when we're looking at my street here, there's really only a couple more trees that are in danger of coming down. And when you look down here, if you're wondering why it didn't get many petitions, these are the people that have the most old girl's trees, but they also have an alleyway. So they don't have to have the dangers of backing out or trying to move into a home and/or have an appliance delivered with a big delivery truck on this narrow little street here. We have lots of problems. We can't even get around a garbage truck in the morning. And if you're late for school or work, too bad, you're stuck. So I only know I have a couple minutes. I'm not sure how much longer I have.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Huh?
Go ahead.
Okay. We were totally blindsided by this change, and we didn't have a chance to say our piece, the piece that says, "We need to make this road better. We need to make it better than what we found it." We have lots of traffic, and then when certain houses have rummage sales, our street gets really congested. And she's maybe not one that has kids that are coming in and out and doing all these things that you need to have your driveway for. You need to be able to safely back up and go, and you can't do that with the current width of our street. I know I have many people that have signed my petition because I wanted to be heard today. So I think I've said my piece. Trees can be replanted. Our street needs to be wider. We don't know what vehicles are going to look like in the future, just like they didn't know that 100 years ago, horse and buggies weren't going to be the main idea anymore. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else want to come to the podium and speak on this subject?
Wendy Marsh, 1412 24th Street.
Thank you, Wendy.
Um, I'm... I don't know how this works generally, so I might be saying stuff, but I got one letter, and in that letter, it told me when there was a meeting, and I came to the meeting, and when I came to that meeting, we were told by that gentleman, whose name I'm sorry, I don't know, that the street was going to be widened and that all the trees were going to come down. Subsequent to that meeting, I got a letter that said there was another meeting, and all of us people in this... In this part that don't want the street widened, attended that meeting, and we expressed concerns. Now, the concerns weren't just about trees. It had other things like the width of the... Whatever you call that. And, you know, what about plowing the snow? And where's all that snow going to go on my sidewalk? Because I can't plow all the snow that goes up onto the sidewalk when the terrace is so small. So there's a lot of reasons, right? There's a lot of reasons. But right now, I want to talk about why the people who signed the petition weren't here when I thought that was the discussion. And that was the only communication I got to come and express that. And none of the people here who signed that petition were in this room then. And so you guys made a decision.
Can you let her finish first? And you're both welcome to come up to the podium. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, ma'am.
Now, today, I heard from my neighbor that there was this covert petition that was delivered, and I didn't get a letter about that. It was going to be heard again. So unless, for my neighbor, I wouldn't have known that I should come and talk again. So my key issue, which was the same issue I had last time, was there's a lack of communication. It affects me personally. I'm the one who's getting an $11,000 assessment, and that's a lot of money. It affects me personally. So when I didn't get a letter that said, "You know what? There was a petition that said we're going to hear again whether or not we should widen the street," that really irritated me because I felt like this committee is doing something covert, like sort of behind my back. And I... Yes, I live at 1412. I live on that street, and it's an older street, and we're all retired, and we have a lot of trees, and it's very nice. And no, we don't have young kids. And no, we don't have a backing out problem. You're absolutely right. But we do have an ambiance. And like I said, I went and I counted how many blue dots there were, and there's 17 blue dots, and there are 32 dots that aren't there. So if you just go by 17 versus 32... 32. People didn't sign a petition. 17 people did. And I'm not counting all... I... That's all I have to say. Please communicate better with the folks that this affects, and I really don't want to feel like there are covert things going on in my own community.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to join the conversation? Please step up. Name and address.
George Rivera, 1613 24th Street. Like I said the first time, the first meeting we had, the street was going to get widened, and that's how we took it. I didn't get the second letter to come to the second meeting that she's talking about, but I came to the third one, and I came to this one. And the agreement was to widen the street, and everybody was fine with that. She wasn't here. That's all I have to say.
Hello.
Janie Rolsey. I live right here, 1409 24th. I've been there for 35 years, and our street between Washington and Jefferson is very historic. Most of the houses are from the 1900s. Our house is from 1865. We have... We had a beautiful tree come down in front of our house because we couldn't afford the $2,900 to save it. That's what the arborist came in to save our tree in front of our house. It was over 90 years old. It was 28 inches. It's... It was a gorgeous tree. My opinion is you have two folds going on with this. These people need access to go in and out of their driveways. They need access to park on the street. We don't. 1409, 1413, 1412 all have alleyways. The rest of the people in this whole area have driveways that are three-car. Most garages are two and a half and three-car. I think one Lewis's, I think, have a five-car garage. So we don't need our street to be widened. We don't need any more trees taken down. We don't need any more trees taken down. We'll lose the ambiance, like she said. We'll lose that whole historic look that we have going on. And I know you'll replace the trees, but I'm not going to be around to see them get big, you know? I'm in my 60s, so chances are, I'm not going to live past 80. So, I think you have two things going on here, and maybe to appease everybody, you need to come up with two different solutions. And another thing is, Wendy is absolutely correct. This whole project has had no transparency. We should have all gotten letters. Every single one of us should have gotten letters, and we all should have been able to voice our opinion before this project even started. And here we are. We're in the midst of this thing with construction workers and gravel and tree cutters, and nobody knows what's going on, or what it's going to cost any of us individually. I mean, this is crazy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, I'm going to let some other people come up. We'll answer the questions that you brought up, too.
I'm Danielle Fromm. I'm at 1624, which is right here. We had a tree that came down. We were okay with losing the tree. It was big. It was dying. We obviously would like a tree replaced. Don't, we're not that worried about it. We have small children, and backing in and out is horrible, like the lady over there. I drive a minivan, so when I have my people across the street and my neighbors parked on the street, I can't get out of my driveway. And I have to back in and out, in and out, in and out, like five or six times, just to get onto the street. And I know people are talking about the traffic maybe being more if it's widened. I'm sorry, people are going down that street super fast, no matter what. So, like Shannon was saying, if it's wider and it makes it more accessible for us, I think it would be safer. We have, like I said, we have three small children, and it's not safe for them. As far as the lady with the snow removal, why can't you put your snow, like, on your yard versus your terrace? I'm sorry, I don't understand why that's an issue. And like she said, the $11,000 assessment, we don't have that either. We are literally below the poverty line, and, I'm sorry, I'm going to cry. We can't afford it either, but if this, this is a project that's happening, I want it done right. And just fix it and fix it right, because I don't want to come back how many years later, and now we have to do this again. Just fix it right. Do it right the first time and not come back later. Because I can't, like I said, I can't afford it, but I want it done, I want it done right. I want my children to be safe. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jody Lewis, and I live at 2402 Jefferson Street, right there. I have to agree with everything Wendy said. I agree with everything Janie said. This whole project has been a fiasco from day one. It should have been that every one of us on 24th Street got a letter saying, "This is what is proposed." We should have got letters giving us bullet points as to each date we were going to have meetings, that we could come and voice our concerns. We didn't get that. Now, I totally can see the point of all the people who live down on the west side of 24th Street. I drive that street to get to my home very often, and yes, I understand, it is so congested. I have to pull over, like you say, and wait for cars to come, but a lot of that is because you are all parking on the street. You don't have garages that can accommodate your cars. I get that. A lot of you, I don't know how many of you, are tenants as opposed to property owners. And as far as the petition, I think the people who are property owners should have been the ones signing that petition and not tenants. That's my opinion. I think this is a project that doesn't have to be all or nothing. The whole street does not have to be widened. Let this end get widened, this end stay as it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you. My name is Gary Hanson. I am the property owner of 1713 24th Street. I'm not the resident there. Shannon, who circulated the petition, is my daughter, and she lives there. So, I'm the property owner. You're absolutely correct. This, I'm sorry, City Council, you have not done a good job presenting this to the people here. You, this has been rushed through, and it should not have been. There are, there is a solution. You're absolutely right. Two different sections of the street, two different issues. And no matter what the City Council does, people are not going to be happy. But the bottom line is, you have to make a decision, and you have to live with it. But worse than that, we have to live with it, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to come to the podium? So, before we get into any other discussion at the, in our neck of the woods, first of all, I want to apologize to the city of Tewrivers for the way this was conducted. We were concerned last time we met regarding this, and I'll speak on behalf of just me on council right now, and I'm still concerned, and we're talking about this again. We talked about the cost per person. We actually amended some things to make it easier on the cost, as we were learning about that. And we did hear from people, not everybody, who was interested in not widening it, and some were interested in widening it. So, I'm a little embarrassed that we're still having this conversation, to be very frank. And we will take necessary steps accordingly to, as a council, to address, to make sure this never, ever happens again on our watch. With that said, is there anything, other comments that anybody wants to add before we go into potentially a motion that can serve up maybe some options that can satisfy both ends of the spectrum on 24th Street? Mark?
Yeah. Mr. President, to me, I sit here embarrassed to listen to this, and there's a lot of confusion, and everyone in the room is right, and I'm going to make a stronger statement of that. We need to determine what caused this problem, fix it so it never happens again, because this is a real, excuse me, Greg, I need to fix this. This is a real debacle. I don't want to have to sit through another time because it's embarrassment to the community. I think, rather than the delaying inevitable logic here is, let's listen to the citizens. There is simple solution to this, as I see it. So, I suggest the motion that Forest Avenue to Washington Street is widened. The consensus majority of people want that. Let's make that happen like it originally was supposed to happen. And then I suggest that we retain the original width of the balance of the street from Washington to Jefferson.
And I'm going to ask you, Mr. Councilman, to hold that motion for a second, because I was reminded that although I did a good job of asking the people here to step forward and give me your comments, I didn't ask people on the phone to do that. And because there's input from the public on this subject, I need to at least give those people, even if they repeat themselves, even if they have the same comments, whether it's widening or not widening, I got to give them the right to call in and express their points of view. So, Mr. Councilman, if you could hold that motion for just a second?
Sure, and I'll continue once the phone calls, finish my thought on that, once it's done.
Okay, thank you. So, Jamie, if you're ready to go to the phones, again, those who are listening, again, I apologize, I didn't go there right away. The number is 920-793-5534. Please call in. We're talking about the subject right now on the zone, on the widening of the street on 24th, or not widening the street on 24th, and give us your point of view, and then we'll go to general input from the public in a little bit. Give just a few more seconds.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Margie Erickson, at 1506 24th Street.
Thank you, ma'am.
We weren't even informed about them wanting to go back to 32.
Ma'am, could you turn down the volume on your television or Facebook? We're getting feedback.
I just did it, yes.
Thank you.
But we weren't even informed about going back to 32 feet, saying who has the petition, and how did it get sent about for people to even make a comment. But I believe we have no problem with our street being 28. And if it changes, a lot of things will be different with the terrace we have, and we, with my flowers, I enjoy having what's out there. So, I just wanted to comment that also, we were not informed, and we would love for it to be 28.
Thank you for that, ma'am. Okay, if you're still trying to call in, because we're just using a single-line system, so I need you to call back if you don't mind.
Hello, please state your name and address.
Vicki Franco, 1413 24th Street. And I am in agreement with keeping our street at the 28-foot width, not expanding it.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're free to call in now. Okay, we're going to go ahead and go back to a discussion, and Mark, I think you were in the middle of something I cut you off on. I apologize. Mr. Councilman, go ahead.
I've stated my motion again. The motion is to widen the street from Forest Avenue to Washington, which I'm hearing from the majority of people here want to widen the street for all the reasons they've stated, and I would suggest that that would be my motion, widen that portion of the street. Let's take the balance of the street, 24th, which would be Washington to Jefferson. I'm hearing the majority of people in that area remain a narrower current width of that street, and let's leave it that way to satisfy the citizens. But the point I really want to, is what an embarrassment for City Council and our management team here to present this foolish lack of communication, and I want it fixed, and I want to see it done in the future, so we don't put all these people through this agita, stress, and confusion that we've done. And then I've got one last question, because I do, I heard there's an additional $15,000 cost. Originally, the cost was, that we presented to the City Council, that we saw, that cost was to widen the entire street, and the bills that each individual person received as their own assessment was their share of the, now I hear another out of the, somewhere in the sky, there's a $15,000 increase in that cost to widen the street. Where did that come from?
That was pointed out, Mr. Bittner, and I agree with you, with the need that this never happened again. We fell down as a staff, and I want to get that comment in as well, because I'm not happy with it either. The comment about the added $15,000 was, should the council elect to go with one section of the street at 28 feet wide and one at 32, there's a legitimate ability of the contractor, the paving subcontractor, of course, they bill through the general, to say, "There's an add-on for bringing in two different paving machines or resetting one paving machine." There's a cost to paving, to laying concrete at two different widths, and in total, that's at $15,000. I would add, though, as we stated earlier, the round number estimate for the additional concrete pavement for widening the whole street was about a plus 30. That would be less. We made a commitment the night the council approved the assessment rule for this, just to go to Ms. Rolsey's comment earlier about folks not knowing where they're standing. In no way will the assessments exceed what the council approved on March 15. And if the, if the actual costs come in lower, our practice is, those lower costs are passed on in the form of reduced assessments. As far as the private lateral charges, that won't change because the location of the right-of-way where the shut-off is doesn't change.
Yeah, I'm going to, opening up the council here to answer some more. I hear the motion. I'm going to hold off on that for just a second to get more discussion. Adam?
I'm going to second what Mr. Bittner and Mr. Andrews said, that this is quite the embarrassment, and should have never happened, and it will never happen again. And I sincerely apologize that this did happen and has caused such a frustration among so many people. And if Mr. Bittner's motion does pass, I don't think that we should be assessing anyone that extra $15,000, because this is a legitimate screw-up by this city, and it should not happen. I don't want to find the money in our budget to do it, but I think it's right, because if we would have had the information out and everybody here to talk about it the first time, we wouldn't be here assessing another $15,000 to anyone, should that be what it is.
Again, I would just point out, as was said three weeks ago, the assessments will not go up if that's an added cost. It's a cost, and I respect, we'd rather not be dealing with that cost, but it would be absorbed as a project cost. Everybody pays for it, but it would not impact.
So, I'm echoing what Adam said, that we will not be assessing a higher assessment to any citizen on 24th Street as a result of having a possibly multi-widened street, 28 and 32.
That will not add into the calculation that yields an assessment.
I agree 100%.
And again, to repeat, in no instance will the assessment rates exceed what were publicly noticed in this council approval.
Okay. Jay had his hand up. Jay?
I like the fact that we're going to go to Washington Street and then widen it. Washington Street would be a good buffer to change the different dimensions. I don't think Adams Street would work too well. Again, me, I as well feel that this, that we dropped the ball here. I think we should have maybe a committee to put together to take care of informing and letting out the information that needs to be said for street widens and street redoing. That's something we can do. And then the other part is, I really don't like to widen the street and then narrow it back up again, but I think in this case, we're going to have to.
So, you're in favor of that as well?
I'm in favor.
Bonnie, do you have your hand up? No? Kay, thank you.
Thank you. If I'm counting these dots right, there are 25 people who do not want this widened, and there are 17 who do. And I was always under the impression that our job on the council was to do what was best for the majority of the city. So...
Thank you, Kay.
I would like to say, but I don't know, are there 25 people that do not want it widened? Or are some of those people that they just didn't say anything yet?
Well, I, I'm going to speculate based on what you just asked. Based on the lack of communication and notification of things going on, we probably don't have everybody aware of this conversation tonight, of widening or not widening it. So, I would agree. Jack just put point of order. Jack just put point of order, I've got a young lady raising her hand. We just finished the public input, can I let her go ahead and say something?
If the council's willing to suspend rules, you may do that.
I suggest we suspend rules and let her talk.
I got a motion to suspend the rules, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sorry ma'am, I just had a, we had to do our thing here.
You need the mic, ma'am.
You need the mic.
Okay. I didn't get to everybody in the petition, because not everybody was home, and I was a one-woman crusade. I did the best I could, knowing that not everybody was gonna be home, but I did what I could. So, no, not everybody got assessed, or was able to meet with me. So, but multiple people, multiple adults in the same home agreed that their street needed to be widened, so I'm sorry I couldn't get to everybody. I do have, I work two jobs, I have three teenagers, and I was petitioning, so I did the best I could, and especially knowing from Washington to Jefferson, they have alleyways, they have wider streets, they have better driveways, bigger garages, they have what we don't have. They also have, you know, the really old girls' trees. We don't have that in our section, and we live in, you know, my parents own my home, because I can't afford it. So here we are. So I just wanted to let you know that it wasn't a covert operation with my petition. If you weren't home, I couldn't get to you. I didn't leave calling cards, I don't have business cards. It was just a grassroots campaign to get our street widened, so that we can have a reasonable street that's accessible and easy to navigate. Thank you for breaking the rules for me.
Thank you, and thank you for stating that as well. Long as I'm on the rule break, I got another hand up, ma'am?
Sorry.
Don't apologize.
I'm sorry, I have to address that. I wasn't saying you were having a covert operation. I was saying that it felt like my city council, because they hadn't informed us, were gonna once again hold a meeting and not have everybody, everybody's input. That's what I was saying. And also, by, by the way, the snow that I was talking about is the one where the big city plow comes through, not when I am plowing. And, and lastly, ma'am, you're absolutely right, there are 25 houses and 17 blue dots, and that doesn't include our street, the, the, this street. So...
Thank you. And by the way, we applaud anybody taking it upon themselves to improve this, the city, the community, whether it's petitions, whether it's voicing your opinion on ordinances, resolutions, anything. We are all citizens here, and we want to continue to make our city the best it could possibly be, so thank you. If you're for it or against it, thank you for doing that. Going back to, I'm going back to our order here, where we have a motion, we have any more discussion regarding the motion that's on the table? I didn't have anybody second it yet. Jack, yes, do I have to?
Somebody seconds it, maybe they should first.
I haven't, we haven't seconded it yet, we're still in discussion.
What I'm going to say is not gonna make anyone happy. Let me do that, premise my comments with that statement first, but I, I think I have to tell the council this in order to do my job. The statute indicates that whenever the council wishes to reconsider or cancel a decision on a special assessment resulting in a final resolution, reconsider or reopen any assessment, not just for, you know, the, the cost being greater than considered or less than considered, the statute says it may after giving notice, as provided in subsection 7A, and after a public hearing, amend, cancel, or confirm the prior assessment. That indicates to me that in order for the council to vote on a modification of a special assessment it has resolved to impose already, it has to give notice, as it did the first time, and hold a hearing before it does so. So, it may well be, as a matter of fact, you know, I, I have to say, it's my opinion, based on what I'm reading here, that if the council wants to do that, basically amend the special assessment it adopted, there should be notice and a public hearing, as was the case with respect to the initial resolution.
So, Jack, I just want to make sure I'm clarifying, we're not talking about a special assessment going up or down, we only have an assessment that we agreed to based on the work that was being done. So if we vote tonight to have the 24, 28-foot and the 32-foot, and it does not affect the assessment, as per city manager said, the assessment will not go up, why would we have to have a public hearing, sir?
Well, because that's what the statute says. The statute says this, is this working? If the actual cost of any project upon completion or after receipt of bids is found to vary materially from the estimates, like the example you were looking at, if any assessment is void or invalid, or if the governing body decides to reconsider and reopen any assessment, it may, after giving notice as provided in subsection 7A, and after a public hearing, amend, cancel, or confirm the prior assessment. It's that word "or" there that concerns me. In other words, the council's ability to amend isn't limited to circumstances where there's been a, a change in the cost of the special assessments that materially varies from the estimates provided to the council.
If the costs go down?
If the costs go down, there's a separate statute which says that, that it, that the assessments may be modified on a per annum basis according to the decrease.
If that's the case, you don't, do you need a hearing for that?
No, you can do that without a hearing under the statute.
So we gotta make sure it goes down, Jim.
Can we drop it down a dollar for each person?
Well, that's, that's based on the, based on the cost of, actual cost of construction.
I understand. Bonnie?
Jack, do we need to have the hearing, though, for 24th Street from Washington to Jefferson? Because that was already part of the vote to not widen the street? If I'm following you, you, you want another hearing because we're changing our vote, right?
I don't, I don't want another hearing, but my concern is, what you do here may not be valid, if you're changing the special assessment that you resolved to at the prior meeting.
But if it is, to make it valid, we have another hearing, is that the point?
Have another public hearing, give notice of it as you did the first time.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. City Manager, your hand is up.
I, I want to make sure we do this legal. We've messed up enough things along the way without not doing it legal. The hearing, and Mr. McDonald, listen carefully, and tell me if I'm wrong, because you don't have benefit of a mic right now, but the special assessment notices were prepared and sent out, those that were the subject of the public hearing, based on a street being widened to 32 feet. And I think those, those assessment estimates are pretty spot-on, if I recall, with where we came in with the bids. And if the council tonight takes the action that's proposed, the three blocks that Bonnie referenced are being rebuilt in the manner that it was bid, and those assessment numbers should be right. Okay?
The assessment will not change.
Will not change, and, and...
At least as a result of this proposal.
If the council votes to not widen that one block, from Jefferson to Washington, the nature of the improvements will change to the tune of four feet of pavement width, is that, regardless of whether that changes assessments or not, Jack, is that the material consideration for holding a hearing?
There's no requirement of a material...
Do you have the mic for a second?
There's no requirement under the statute that there be material variation from the estimate, in order for a council to, to amend it. That's one of the circumstances in which it can, under the statute. And by the way, the, the provision about cost, where costs are less, the statute says if the cost of the project is less, then the special assessments levy the governing body, without notice or hearing, shall reduce each special assessment proportionally. So the statute specifically addresses the situation you were talking about.
Right, so that, without a public hearing?
Now, practically speaking, this may be a case where no one will object or appeal the council's decision tonight. They have 90 days to do so under the statute, once the final resolution is adopted.
Hopefully by that time, the streets are done.
So, yeah, so as a practical matter, what I'm saying may make no difference. No one may challenge you, but I felt I had to tell you what I think the law is.
Jack, I appreciate it, you are a legal counsel for a reason. Adam, do you have something you want to say?
What might someone, and not that you advise people on challenging decisions of the council, but what, what might somebody challenge? If the assessments aren't going up, would you challenge my street is two feet narrower? I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
What they might challenge is the validity of the assessment, based on the fact that no hearing was held or vote taken or notice given on the, the council changing the assessment.
But we're not changing the assessment.
Whether they have a read to do so, except the letter of the law, I don't know.
Yeah, if we were changing the assessment, I would agree with you, we'd stop the presses and do what we need to do, but that's not happening.
I just have a duty, and I'm charged with...
But I, I appreciate that. Plus, if we were trying to change the assessments, I think all of us in council would agree, we gotta figure out a way to eat it, because we're not gonna pass it to you guys.
Mr. President, I've had my hand up, and I'd like to be, again, what I'm gonna say is gonna further expose the embarrassment to the city, but what I'm hearing now, correct me, originally, the entire assessment was at 32 feet. You can't tell me, the people from Washington to Jefferson, if it originally is 32 feet and it's only be 28 feet, it's not gonna cost as much for that segment to be done, because there are four feet less of concrete poured. And I've already heard that the person, and it's gonna cost the contractor now to bring in a second machine, $15,000. So my point is, I think we've over-assessed the people who are staying on the narrow street, because they're not gonna get all the width and street, and the cost that would be accurate on the people who originally assessed at the increased 32 feet from Washington to Forest Avenue. And Jim, if you, if you don't have a good answer, I don't want to hear this.
Let's, let's try to answer after. Okay.
Real quickly, there's another two feet of grass that needs to be replanted, topsoil that goes under that, and the, every driveway extension and carriage walk needs to be two feet longer. So there are some offsetting costs as well, if that helps.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding a motion we haven't seconded yet? Let's go to second the motion Mark has on the table, if you don't mind. Mark, can I get you to repeat it one more time? Sorry, sir.
I, I didn't like the answer, but I will repeat my original motion. I make a motion, because of all the confusion and frustration we created for the community, that we take Forest Avenue to Washington Street and widen that section of 24th Street as we originally had the public hearing on, widen that portion only. I further say that the motion includes, from the Washington Street to the Jefferson Street section, the older neighborhoods, the people who don't want it widened, they want it to remain at 28 feet, we leave that in place and leave it 28 feet and satisfy the constituents of this community.
Okay, I got a motion, thank you, and thanks for repeating that. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that, Kurt.
Thank you. Alva, Jay, you echoed earlier on that, but we weren't in the formal second thing, so we got second. Any other discussion before we go to vote? Jay?
I just want to remind everybody that when we do this, this is gonna be the way it's gonna be for the next 50, 75 years, so...
Yep.
What our city's gonna look like.
There you go. Adam?
I would like, in that motion, please, to include that there will be no extra assessed value to anyone. I know we've said it, but I think it should also be stated in the motion, but I did not draft that motion or second that motion, so I'm just asking that that could be attached to the motion.
Adam, thank you. Can you make that adjustment in your motion? Can you add that to it, Mark? That no additional assessment will happen or occur as a result?
Yeah, but that still doesn't answer my original question, is, I still don't understand how four feet of concrete, not being applied, doesn't inflate the, the assessment that we gave to the balance of the people on Washington to Jefferson Street. I'd just like to see more facts. If in fact, there's, it didn't, and their assessment is the same for a 28-foot cement street as it would be for a 32-foot cement street, we can, then, I'll agree to that. If it isn't, I think we're being, doing the community a disservice by overcharging the people on that segment that aren't going four feet wider, okay?
So the question that Councilman Wohuski asked you is to make sure, in the motion, we're gonna make sure there's no additional assessment. That means there could be, potentially, a savings to some of those folks, but he wants to make sure in the motion for the, what you just provided, that there's gonna be no additional assessment to these people.
And I'll agree to that, as long as, I'll, I'll make the amendment that there'll be no additional savings or, or increase to the motion, as long as we thoroughly investigate we're not increasing the $15,000 cost that we are incurring and shifting it to people who don't have to pay, I guess that's complicated.
Yes, just go, Bill, do you have a second on that change?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we're still in discussion mode. Jay, thank you. Adam, anybody else have, anything they want to add? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead, and Jamie, are you ready? We're gonna do a roll call vote, just so it's clear, hold on, Mark, I'll repeat it, we're already beyond that. We are, we are making a motion and voting for a, the block of Washington to Jefferson to stay at 28-foot, and from Washington on, the rest of 24th Street, it would go to 32 feet. That's the motion, and no additional assessment to anybody who lives along 24th Street. So that's what we're voting on right now.
Thank you.
Okay? Jamie, roll call vote, please.
Adam Wohuski.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
John Cassavant.
Aye.
Kay Coach.
Aye.
Darlo Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shamilunas.
Aye.
If eight yeses and one no.
Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, we will have two different widths of street going down 24th Street. Thank you for all your input. Now, we still have input from the public, we're not done yet. We have more opportunities for you to weigh in on anything that's on the agenda tonight, or anything you'd like to see on future agendas, and please, again, step up to the podium. We'll start with the people in the room, Jamie, step up to the podium, name and address, and list anything you want to talk about. By the way, Bonnie, Mary, there is documents we have in front of us regarding your request to talk about tonight, so feel free to just talk about it, and all the council has, they have a document in front of them. So please step to the podium, my right, your left, name, address, and bring up anything that's on the agenda. There you go, Jeff, now is, now's your turn, okay?
Jeff Dahlke, 1137 27 Adams Street, and I want to talk about the proposed mask mandate in city buildings. When the governor's first mandate was, was struck down, the southern counties in the state had thought about creating their own. They thought twice about that, because they were worried about lawsuits coming from individuals throughout the state, and just from the county themselves. Doing that is gonna open up the door for the same thing to happen here. And not only that, I mean, this has been going on for a year now. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask, if you don't want it, don't wear one. It's pretty simple, it's pretty cut and dried. But by doing that, you're gonna open your door for a lawsuit from somebody. That's all I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you. That is on the agenda tonight, by the way, so we will be talking about that further on. Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, my name is Mary Tim, I live at 2808 River Lane, Two Rivers. I'm originally from Two Rivers, and I recently moved back, a few years back, had been gone since 1975. Some of you might be aware of that Jean Wolfmeyer Foundation is trying to raise money for a fountain that will be in her honor and her husband's honor, Sandy, as well as Jean Wolfmeyer, for their contributions to the arts in our community. You may be aware or not aware that when Jean first started teaching here, she was 19 years old, she came from Mishkot and went on to study in New York, and then Chicago, and then came here to settle down and teach dance. She did teach here, in Two Rivers, for over 25 years, she's done the Nutcracker... She's done the Nutcracker, which many of you probably have maybe seen over the years, and, and that was her 44 years. She recently sold her studio in Manitowoc. She started her career teaching here in Two Rivers in 1960. And I was one of her first students. I studied with her for 14 years. And because of Jean, I was able to have an incredible career in dance and voice, and I worked in Vegas for many years. I am so much in, in awe of her, how she studied and then ended up teaching here for the years that she did. She turned out thousands and thousands of dancers. Many of them became professionals, many of them became teachers themselves. So they are going to be doing this fountain in Manitowoc, and it's at the corner of 8th Street and Maritime Drive. And that will be taking, taking effect this summer sometime. But they do need to raise money for this yet. There are pavers that are being, you know, sold for, you know, anybody can make any, any kind of a contribution in any amount. The pavers start at $250 and they go up to $10,000. But if you have $10 that you want to contribute, that's just fine. But what I'm asking for today is, I think that City of Two Rivers should definitely, you know, contribute to this. I don't know in, in, you know, what amount. That certainly would be up to the City of Two Rivers. I'm not asking for a certain amount. I'm just stating that that's, that she did start her career here, and she taught here for over 25 years. And if she wouldn't have taught here in Two Rivers, I would have never had that opportunity. My parents could not take me to Manitowoc for lessons. So, you know, I did end up studying with her here in Two Rivers. So if you could just give some consideration to this, I'd really appreciate it. She has done an awful lot for the arts in our community. Jean's turning 73 years old, 93 years old this year, 73, 93 years old. And she's still, you know, teaching a little bit on the side with the new person that took over her students. So again, thank you very much for hearing me, and if you could give some consideration to this city council, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And we'll post that also on Facebook or our website. So if people are interested, especially those who were touched in the past with her teaching, thank you for coming out and sharing that. Any other input from the public in the audience we have tonight? If not, I'm going to go to the phones. So Jamie, are you ready to operate the phones? Here we go. Please call in with anything that's on the agenda that you want to speak about, other than the street widening, we already covered that one, or anything you'd like to have on future agendas, please. Okay, we're going to move on to council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. We're on number seven on the agenda tonight. Anybody have anything they want to share? Adam?
Aside from the numerous phone calls and emails on 24th Street, I did receive, I think, a total of two or three on the mask mandate. One was for it, and there were two that were against, against that. That pretty much completes what I have.
Okay. Hold on a second. We're going to, thank you, Adam. We'll come back around. I'm going to suspend the rules again, if I get a motion for that.
Yeah, name is Neil Jakart, 1409 25th Street.
Can you tell Neil to hold on for just a second, please?
Sure. Can you hold for just a second?
Make a motion to suspend him.
Is no council member in objection?
Does anybody have an objection to be taking this call? Okay, thank you. Neil, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. I'm just going to jump back and reiterate what Jeff was just talking about in regards to the mask mandate in the city buildings. Just to keep this simple, like you said, you know, we're all adults here. We all go into and out of city buildings. Masks are masks, some work, some don't. Duke University study put out last August, tested 14 different masks 10 different times. One worked 100% of the time, 10 were adequate, three of them, they basically said neck gaiters, bandanas, and thin cloth masks just don't work. They're actually worse because they take larger droplets and drop them smaller particles. So I think, I think it's something to look at. I know everybody's just following everybody else that, you know, you're looking at the state of Wisconsin and the CDC and the Manitowoc Health, you know, let's, let's get away from that. I mean, this is 14 months in. We all can make our own decisions. I'm not anti-mask, I'm not anti-vaccine. What I am is I want people to make decisions. You know, nobody's jumping over somebody and jumping in their face and talking, you know, within six feet of them. There's partitions in a lot of areas. You know, that's my biggest thing here. I, I guess the, what I'd like to see is, is this city, and I thought you guys did a great job last summer when I think a lot of social media stuff, when the beaches got pretty packed, there was some comments about being unsafe. And I, I think the city did the right thing and didn't jump all over that and force things. So, you know, we're at 70% of all Wisconsinites, age 65 and older are already vaccinated. All right? I bet that number's higher in Two Rivers. The reason it's low, 70%, the other 20%, they're looking at, you know, larger communities where they're underserved and they can't get to these people or very rural areas. You know, we're at almost 35% of everybody, 40% people have one shot of the vaccine already. I mean, I think it's time just to, to kind of move on from this. I know the variants are out there, but these vaccinations are working against those things, you know? We need to question healthcare. I understand they're there for a reason. They do a great job, but everything they do and say isn't always correct. You know, you should be questioning them. I mean, a, a great example is when Robert Redfield, the CDC director, last year said that masks, not vaccines, but masks will protect you from COVID-19 better than the vaccine. Really? I mean, read that Duke University study. If you guys have an opportunity, I'm telling you, masks work, but not all masks work. All right? I know it's a resolution you got to vote on tonight. I hope you guys can make a decision on this and, and let's, let's get things back to normal.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. Appreciate your call. If someone calls while we're talking about other input from public, I'm going to ask the same thing again, if you guys don't mind. So any other communications besides, thank you for the masks and 24th Street? Jay?
I had a person call me that was like, they lived by the beach. I don't remember what the address was that she gave me. But she said now that weather's getting warm, there's people out on bikes, and they're not stopping for stop signs, they're going through, just a reminder that bikes, bicycles have to follow all traffic signs and be a little more courteous to drivers. I guess there was an adult that went through a stop sign and she almost hit him going into her driveway. Well, not her driveway, but going down the street. So just, just a heads up.
Good reminder that Springs here, let's make sure we're careful with what we do on the streets again, right? Any other communication from public, if anybody wants to share? Mark?
I had one call, the subject we've talked about regarding masks. It was from an older lady who's a citizen of our community who lost a loved one through the COVID, and she pleaded with me, please, please, let's continue with masks until it is entirely safe.
Okay, thank you. I got the same call from the young, from the lady as well. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Bill?
I got one thing, two people from the handout that was sent with the utility bill, wanted to know why we bought a new ladder truck for 1.2 million. What's wrong with the old one?
The question is, why are we buying a new ladder truck for 1.2 million?
Right.
Just want to make sure everybody can hear that okay.
And I do understand while that is a capital budget item, this year, I believe, for a $400,000 potential down payment, the chief and, and committee that's been working on it at the station will be presenting a very thorough report on that to city council. And chief could speak to that a little more if you like at this point. It's a, a piece of equipment that's over 25 years old and has been scheduled for some time.
Thank you. Currently, our ladder truck is a 1992 Pierce. It has exceeded its life expectancy. Traditionally, they last approximately 20 to, 20 to 25 years. We are encroaching the 30-year mark with our current piece of apparatus. It is well-maintained. It is a nice piece, a piece of equipment. However, due with anything, it's reached the end of its life. So that is why we are looking at a new ladder truck. It is a rather piece, expensive piece of equipment. We are, we have gone through an extensive search. We should have that for you next council meeting with details and a nice presentation for everybody's knowledge and give you some basis as to what we did. Sir?
That's what I thought was happening, was chief was getting bids and was going to re-present that to council. So I don't know why the utility bill stated what the exact cost was going to be. Because it could have come in lower from when we had that conversation.
And in fact, it did.
I get it, it's what was budgeted, but I don't think it should be out there as 1.2 million, because what if it comes in at 1.1?
I believe in not to overstep my bounds. I believe that's what was put out there, is what it was budgeted at is 1.2. The amount will be less, hopefully.
Okay.
Thank you. So we should just make sure we're clear on that when we state that.
It made, it made crystal clear, the council had provided resources in the budget. It did not represent, that's what it would be spent. I think it's fair to say, the budget's a very public document. It indicates intentions, it indicates an order of magnitude. So if council doesn't wish for us to discuss budgeted items, please so direct.
No, I don't think that's what I said.
Help me understand it.
Greg, that wasn't my interpretation. I think what was said was we approved 1.2 million, knowing that we're going out to bids, and hopefully it won't exceed that, it might come in lower than that.
It shouldn't come in as sounding as if that's what we agreed on, that chief came back and presented and said, this is the fire truck we're getting for 1.2, when we didn't have that discussion. That's precisely what I said.
Well, I gathered there was concern about stating that dollar amount. It didn't represent that is what we will spend, that's the allowance.
That's what I said.
I'll go back and take on how it was written.
I think, we, we understand it. We just got to make sure we're clear going forward. The good news is this, is we're keeping our city safe, and we had 30 wonderful years with this ladder truck, and we're trying to buy one that also lasts for another 30 years. Not quite as long as the road widening, I think, Jay, but 30 years at least for the ladder truck, hopefully. Mark, any other calls?
And I want to, I want to stress the one, as a member of the personnel finance committee, we had to take some steps because availability of fire trucks and manufacturers of fire trucks are limited, and they only have a limited capacity. And as a member of the finance committee, the budget, let me tell everybody, is a roadmap, a plan that is not going to be exact dollars. It's a guide for us to drive our future in the financial, every business has a budget. When we say something is budgeted, as the fire truck is budgeted at that price, we're always going to attempt to get a lower price, and we come back, circle back, and get final approval. So anybody who reads our budget, which is public knowledge, their budgeted figures, we always attempt to get lower price on capital expenditures, okay?
Well, I'm just going back to say, Bill, when he mentioned it, I didn't see the utility bill, but he said, why did we buy a fire truck for 1.2 million? And we didn't.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. Just clarify the fact that the citizen, the citizen thought we bought when we didn't. Go back to those people and, and tell them, right. We're doing that right.
It's not you, I'm just clarifying.
We're, we're doing that right now. It's, it's okay, we got, we, I think, anything else, any other comments from anybody in the, in the public? Only comments were the mask. Again, I'll echo what these guys said, a couple of calls on that, a couple of calls on 24th Street widening, and everyone seems to be excited about the summer events coming up, so that's a good news. Any, any other commission committees or board updates, moving on to number eight?
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes, Mark.
I've got two committees I want to report on. As a member of the Room Test Committee, the Two Rivers Room Test Committee met last week, and we're preparing for our meeting with the Manitowoc Joint Session, the Manitowoc-Tubers Room Test Committee, to discuss the continuation of the contract and meet some of the challenges that were presented with. And secondly, thank you to council. Some of you have already come back and told us, finance committee, personal finance committee, but I would encourage you, the council members, as we ask you, any changes, corrections, or additions that you want to make to strategic plan, please try to get that to us by Wednesday, because Wednesday evening, we have another personnel finance committee, and we're going to review all the comments we get from council, and we're going to incorporate it into a new strategic plan for continuation in the next year, and then we'll present it to council for final approval. But thank you. Encourage your comments.
Thank you, Mark. Any other committee updates?
No.
I've got one. We had a Celebrate Two Rivers event committee meeting last week, the 28, it is going to be, again, the second annual Celebrate Two Rivers event on August 28th in Walsh Field. 3 o'clock to 10 o'clock is the tentative time. Bands, food, games, fun, fireworks, you name it. We're working on that plan for the upcoming summer. And by the way, if you haven't seen exploretworivers.com, it's full of events, a lot of activity this summer, everything from Beach Bash to Snow Fest to Celebrate Two Rivers to movies, to bands, a lot of activities. So we discussed that as well, and we're putting a marketing plan together to support that out of the branding and marketing committee. That's my update. Anybody else? All right, Greg, I want to turn it over to you. City manager report.
These items are listed on your agenda for tonight. Run down through them quickly. I would just note that the, the moratorium for utility disconnections for non-payment of bills ends on November 15. Now, typically for residential properties, April 15 is when the winter moratorium, so-called, comes to an end. It's a little different this year because we have effectively had a moratorium on shut-offs since November 1st of 2019. We began, I'm sorry, Adam?
I don't want to interrupt you, but do we have an invited guest?
Oh, you know what? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I rolled right in, I rolled right in, and Terry was back here. Thank you.
No problem.
First up, I apologize, Terry. First up, under the city manager's report, Terry Ale, our Youth Services Coordinator at the Lester Public Library, regarding the library's participation in a nationwide pilot study on the use of resources from the Reimagining School Readiness Toolkit. This is to help prepare young children for school. Our Children's Services Director, Terry Ale.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. I appreciate that, too. Okay, so my name is Terry Ale. I'm Youth Services Coordinator at the Lester Public Library here in Two Rivers. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about something that we've been working on for quite a while now, despite COVID and everything that's been happening. I'm also going to, I have a little show and tell, because it's always more fun if you can touch and look at things. This is one of our current Storytime to Go packs. This is actually this week's packs. They're available for group site pickup. I'm just going to pass it around so you can kind of take a look at it. Jeff, if you would, I'm making sure. These are, these are at a premium. We need to get this back to the library, okay? So, pass that on. Okay, so in October of 2019, I attended the Reimagining School Readiness Training hosted by the Wisconsin Department of Instruction. The Reimagining School Readiness Project is a collaboration between the Pacific Library Partnership, the Bay Area Discovery Museum, and the California State Library. With funding received through the Institute of Museum and Library Services, they revised, disseminated, and evaluated the Reimagining School Readiness Toolkit. The toolkit is a set of evidence-backed school readiness activities and resources designed to equip library staff with the tools and processes to help families prepare children 0 to 8 for success in school and life. So often, schools focus on children's ability to name letters, hold a pencil, and count to 10 as the only indicators of school readiness. But research shows that children through age 8 need other skills to succeed both in school and in life. Skills like science and math reasoning, executive functions such as planning, self-awareness, self-control, as well as creativity. For more specific details, if you really want to read all the research, I was not going to bore, bore you with that tonight, you can read it online. After initial testing in California libraries in 2017, a total of 12 pilot sites were selected nationally through a competitive application process, Lester Public Library was chosen as one of the four Wisconsin sites, and we began utilizing the Toolkit in January of 2020. So, using the Toolkit did not dramatically change services in the youth department, in fact, our program was already implementing most of the practices recommended by the Toolkit. Becoming a pilot site confirmed that our program was in line with best practices that were evidence-based, we know what we were doing was what needed to be done, but the Toolkit simply helped us to communicate more effectively with families about the research. So why are we doing what we do? Why do we do this finger play? Why do we do story time this way? Why do we encourage these activities at home? While the Toolkit does provide specific ideas for programs, it more importantly, challenges libraries to rethink early education. I am proud to say that Lester Public Library is ahead of the curve. After submitting reports of our efforts with the Toolkit to the program administration, Lester Public Library was chosen as a case study for the program, one of only four in the nation. So this case study is basically, so when another library says, I want to use this Toolkit, toolkit, what should I do? They go to the Toolkit Administration, and they look at the case studies to see what the best of the best are doing, and the Lester Public Library is one of those four case studies, so we're very proud of that. Now, COVID-19, of course, has put a serious dent in our progress with the Toolkit, but I'm also happy to report that the way we adapted our programs with our Story Time to Go pack, our steam packs, our screen breaks, were also included in the case study, illustrating our ability to continue to provide exceptional early education experiences during difficult times. There are only two childcare centers in Two Rivers, there's no way that that number adequately addresses the early education needs of the number of young children in our city. We, as a community, have to step up to this challenge, and that is the void that the library fills. The library plays an incredibly vital role here, providing high-quality, evidence-based early learning programming for children, especially for 0 to 5. Just to kind of give you an idea, during the summer of 2020, we averaged 117 children and families picking up our Story Time to Go packs, and 100 picking up our steam to go packs, and the steam packs were completely paid for by NextEra Energy, so we are constantly looking for ways to fund all of our crazy ideas, no, not crazy, perfectly logical, very evidence-based stuff. And then in the fall, we reduced the number that we made, just because kids are back at school, they don't need as many activities, and, but we still service 70 children and their families every single week with our Story Time to Go pack. And then we also, we offered, during the school year, we're now offering screen breaks for kids who are tired of being online, and we provide materials for 75 children and their families every single week during this entire time, so. More than 80% of a child's brain is formed during the first three years, and what experience, what they experience during this window can irreversibly affect how their brain develops. Now, traditional early education begins at, basically at 4K, so the fact that the library is, was chosen as a case story, as a case study, is pretty exceptional, and I just wanted to share that with the council, that we're doing great things at the library, so if you are interested, or if you have young ones in your life, and you'd like them to do some very authentic, hands-on learning experiences, I encourage you to come, pick up a Story Time to Go pack, even though the library building is going to be opening again May 3rd, we still will be offering these services because COVID has really shown that there is a need for these type of materials in our community, and we're going to keep doing them, to the best of our ability. Does anybody have any questions for me? Adam?
Will those still be available through curbside or through the drive-through window once the library opens?
Yes, they will, so you can, you could get them in the building or outside the building.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, I know you gave us a tour, Jeff, you and Terry gave us a tour a couple weeks ago, and it's very impressive, how much work they do, and how they have to handle this stuff manually, to be able to service our people in our communities, so, and to be one of four, to be selected on a case study in our little town of Two Rivers, our libraries across the country, let's give these guys a hand.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, librarians, we tend to be kind of quiet, that's kind of our nature.
We should clap softer, I'm sorry.
We just don't always toot our own horn, so sometimes, you know, we can hear negative things about what's happening at the library right now, but I just want everybody to know in our community, we are working our butts off, and we're doing good stuff.
Thank you, for all you guys do, and thank you for sharing this with us and the rest of the community.
Can't wait for it to open, that's, people are excited.
You said May 3rd, right?
May 3rd.
Okay, May 3rd, mark your calendars.
Thank you so much, Terry, Jeff, thank you as well. Thank you. And again, thanks for the cue, Adam, that was a great presentation. Okay, some things to share from my report tonight, like I was prematurely announcing, we're coming off a, effectively, a moratorium on utility disconnects that commenced on November 1 of 19, it would have normally rolled off the moratorium on shut-offs in April 1, or April 15 of last year, but because of the COVID situation, the State Public Utilities Commission, Public Service Commission, had extended it, they now have authorized that. The city certainly wants to work with customers, we know what a lot of people have been through in the current pandemic situation, but the fact is, the amount of accounts receivable has grown, the financial health of the utilities is of concern to all ratepayers, so, shut-offs for non-payment will commence on April 15, all customers will first, with delinquent accounts, will first be provided with the opportunity to enter into a deferred payment agreement, that is a requirement, but the customer service staff, working with the electric department crews, are coordinating on this, because it's anticipated this will be a busy time, and we just appreciate people's patience, because we've got to be dealing with these things, and hopefully, some of the programs that are out there, not just the individual relief bill checks, but some of the programs that are specific to helping tenants and utility customers, can be brought to bear, because ultimately, the utilities, the utilities, water, sewer, electric, stormwater, are all of our responsibilities.
Greg, I got a question, I'm sorry, do you know how much of bills have been delayed? What's that total dollar amount, right now, that's potentially a burden?
It's substantial, on, but, Dave or Brian, do you care to address that? Dave, I know we, we have been monitoring that, I don't know if you have a totally up-to-date figure, Dave Busch is our Finance Director.
Thank you.
Yep, not twitch on the spot, but, yep.
It's going to be a vague answer, because I don't really want to throw out numbers unless they're accurate, but it is a significant amount of money, and by significant, I mean hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've been behind, we have made efforts to nicely collect them, and we're at the point where we need to be able to take that extra step, but it has been a significant, and that's over all the utilities, not just one or two utilities at all.
The reason, thank you for giving us a range, I think that citizens need to know that as a steward of all of our dollars, that we're now carrying quite a bit of burden on this, everybody is, everybody went through COVID, but it is, we're trying to then make up for this, and it's not like we have a couple hundred thousand dollars in a coffer waiting to cover this, so everyone, we need to do your part, please, because it'll help ease the burden on the rest of the community, if we can get caught up as much as we possibly can, that's why I wanted to make sure we share a number, so they're not thinking it's $10,000, it's a lot of money.
And we'll get some more detailed numbers, too.
Are we, for people who got way behind, are we making them pay the full amount, or are we trying to make payment schedules, or working with them?
It's definitely a working with them kind of thing, there's, we have what we call DPAs, or Deferred Payment Agreements, where we are asking them to put a certain amount of money on that bill, and then paying something in addition to their current charges, because if you, if you only, if you're only paying, you know, $75 a week, but your bill is coming to you, or $75 a month, and your bill is coming to you, and it's 150, you're never going to catch up, so it's got to be something on top of that in order to catch up. If anybody does have any questions, I certainly recommend them that they contact the customer service area, even if you're just interested on how we handle it.
Thank you for that, Dave.
Sure.
Sorry for me interrupting, but I wanted to make sure that was understood.
Okay, do want to confirm that we got written notifications since the last council meeting, that the Department of Administration has awarded the Community Development Block Grant, COVID virus special grant funding for the application as authorized by council, for the drive-through facility at the senior center, that was to facilitate meal pickup, and also, not just for individual meals to seniors, but, and other program participants, but also to help facilitate the Meals on Wheels drivers, many of whom are volunteers in picking up materials, that is an $88,000 project, based on cost estimates that were in the grant application, that would be for 100% federal funding with no local match required. There is the matter now submitting, being invited to, well, we did submit, excuse me, a full-blown application, there is the matter of a grant agreement that will be forthcoming with the details on how that works, so that's good news, good work by Elizabeth, our Community Development Director, in coordination with the Rec Department and the Senior Center. The electric utility was, again, recently awarded the American Public Power Association's RP3 Diamond Level Designation as a reliable public power provider, this is a three-year review and award, this is for years 2021 through 2024, and it's not just rubber stamping some paperwork, but it does involve a thorough review of aspects that relate to the reliability of provision of electric power to the community, and there's our Utility Superintendent, Mr. Delman, our Electric Utility Superintendent, displaying the award, Brian, be here if you have any questions for him as well, but, well done, a good mark among public, public power providers. Just a reminder, the upcoming meetings of the Splashpad and Ice Skating Rink Planning Committee, this week Thursday, 6:00 PM, here in chambers, and available via Zoom as well, that meeting will focus on a review of three alternative sites that were identified at the committee's first meeting in late January, the consultant will be back with comments, observations, recommendations relative to the three sites, which are Neshota Park, Washington Park, and Central Park East. Then the next meeting will be on May 6, about a month out, Thursday, May 6, also at 6:00 PM. Public, all council members, of course, welcome to attend those meetings. Our State Senator Andre Jacques will be doing a series of listening sessions around his Senate District, one here in Two Rivers, will be two weeks from today, Monday, April 19th, 11:00 AM to noon, here in Council Chambers, so the public's invited, I certainly plan, we've already shared with Andre and with our state representative, copies of the City Council Resolution urging some manner of increase in shared revenues, likewise, if you get League of Municipalities email updates, the League has come out with a list of items that they collect, they, on our behalf, are urging the legislature to look at with the budget, including something we heard from Andre and from Shay Sortwell, our state rep, a few weeks ago, another issue would be possible increase in funding to locals for general transportation aids, the gas tax money that comes back to help us do things with our streets and roads and bridges, so, Andre, like I say, will be here on the 19th. Mark?
Can we open that meeting up on Facebook Live, so if anybody could watch it in our community, and perhaps-
I like that.
If we could, could we even have them a time to call in, at the end or something, ask questions that hadn't been addressed?
Yeah, I'll, if you will, I'll have Lisa in our office coordinate that with the Senator's staff, I think, it's, I think, I can't imagine there being an objection to it going on on Facebook, what, what they would prefer for the protocol on questions, it seems like a great idea.
It'd also be good to recap it, so that people who may not be able to-
Watch it live, can actually see what was discussed, if there's anything that would, you know, be of interest to them following this.
Or they can watch it if they're not able at the end, at a later date, too, that could be a good recap, too, Kurt.
But, we will pursue that with the Senator's office, we welcome him here, I think that's a great idea, we do want to surprise him, but so, we got a couple of weeks, we'll reach out.
I'm sure he'd love the idea.
I would think, I would think, thank you. Just a reminder in general, cemetery cleanup, winter decorations will be removed by the 15th, I think we have signage going into the cemetery that reminds people of that, there's a one-month gap there, where we ask that, because the crews go through and clean up the gravesites, clean up the cemetery, so, winter decorations off by April 15, summer decorations can be placed anytime after May 15, so gives you about a couple of weeks before Memorial Day. Upcoming events, this notification came in today from Manitowoc County Emergency Services, reminding everyone that there's a statewide tornado drill with siren activations next week, Thursday, April 15, on the 15th, the plan is to have test tornado warnings sounded at 1:45 PM, and again, at 6:45 PM, Manitowoc County will activate the outdoor warning sirens at both of those times, and people are urged to practice, whether in work settings, institutional, or home settings, to move to their designated shelter locations. Adam?
Just a question, does the county turn those on all the time, or does the fire department, are they responsible for ours in the city?
I believe dispatch activates those, but Chief indicates that is the case, yeah, I believe that's controlled out of there.
That's just more of a curious question.
Yep, and we'll try to remind folks with a couple of Facebook posts next week, because, you know what, I bet most of us even hearing it tonight, will hear the sirens, go off and say, what's going on?
So in either case, Greg, what you're saying is, they should act as if the drill is real, and practice where you'd go?
Yes, that's, that's what's recommended.
Rather than just ignore it and say, oh, that's just a test.
And you know, I'm sure if you go to the county website, there's some good reminders as far as things that it's great to have, like an emergency radio, if there's a power outage, so you can get messages, also the notation there on the left, if, and you can appreciate this, if severe weather is forecast on April 15, not a good day to be having a drill.
Unless, of course, it's the real thing, and it's a great day to have a drill.
Right, so, if there's severe weather, or the chance of it forecast on the 15th, the actual drill will be moved to the 16th, so, in any event, if you hear those sirens, please pay attention. Some other updates, still busy on the personnel front, Jamie working with a lot of our department heads, other department heads in, working to fill some vacancies, interviews have been completed, at least the first round of interviews, I'm sorry, for the full-time police secretary, first round of interviews completed for the full-time administrative assistant position in utilities, and we have, since the last meeting, filled the year-round part-time position, 1,540 hours, I believe it is, in Parks and Cemetery, and Chris Vander Veren, new employee out there, he started today, so, by way of updates there. Just a quick congratulations and shout-out to the fire department and Firefighters Local 423, on a phenomenally successful fish boil, they moved them through better than any fast-food restaurant ever did in the drive-through lane, on Friday night, there were 730 meals served, they did it safely and efficiently, raised lots of money to benefit local charities, and if you had a chance to get the fish boil, it was a great meal as well, so, kudos to the fire department and Local 423, the firefighters union, a lot of volunteer efforts on that. And by the way, the fish was seasoned nicely, but if you want salt with that, if you, we had a few people ask us for a few days, we had a regular procession of trucks coming in down at DPW, the city did take delivery of 500 tons of salt for storage at the DPW sheds, this was an easy winter, but we do at the beginning of each year, gosh Jim, what about May, we commit for the following winter?
We're committed for next year.
Okay, March already, we've committed for next year's salt practices, purchases, happily, there's room in the sheds for this 500 tons, which should get us through a full winter, so, we're, you can appreciate this subalt commodity that comes in on boats, generally gets unloaded in Green Bay, so to take advantage of the joint purchasing contract, which I believe is still through the state of Wisconsin, it's necessary for communities to commit to a given quantity. We didn't use all of last year's salt, so, last year, so we are, we're full to the brim, but year in, year out, it works out to about 500 tons of, of salt, so, that's that. The other thing is, we know what, we know what we're paying for it, where it can go up or down. Of course, we do have the general election tomorrow, including three candidates for three positions on City Council, the polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, under the direction of our city clerk and her very capable staff of election workers. Two Rivers Statistics, we have 6,651 registered voters, as of Friday, Jamie had mailed out 826 absentees, and I, do you have an updated figure for tonight, as to how many have come in? 548 absentee ballots had been returned as of today, not so many in the mail as I thought there would be today.
Yeah, I know, it was about 20.
Oh, it was, okay, that was an estimate this afternoon, thank you. Also, switching over to the intergovernmental realm, we, council, a week ago, approved a resolution expressing concern and protesting inequities in funding provided to cities, smaller cities, excuse me, towns and villages versus metro cities, which are generally 50,000 or above, or central cities of standard metropolitan statistical areas, in the American Rescue Plan Act, and we compared how Two Rivers and Manitowoc, getting about $99 per capita, fared relative to their, just slightly in some cases, larger peers around Wisconsin, where we've seen the amount of assistance under the so-called rescue bill, anywhere from $200 to $700. That resolution, I'll say, is still in the process of being communicated out to our congressmen, our two senators, the president, the vice president, and Governor Evers, I've been seeking some other numbers to help make our case on that, I would share something that I was able to tell council last Monday, as small, non-metropolitan cities, Two Rivers and Manitowoc- cities, Two Rivers and Manitowoc, I threw Manitowoc into the mix for discussion, we're getting about $9,900 per capita. 1.1 million is projected for Two Rivers, 3.4 million for Manitowoc. That's a lot of money, and it'll be nice to be able to apply it to some local needs, but when you consider that the city funding out of this $1.9 trillion bill will all be funded with debt that you're going to carry, and your children, and your grandchildren, our nation is going to carry, the people of this community are going to carry just as much as people anywhere else, we're getting inequitably treated, so to speak. Almost said something else there. But those other communities that are, that are metro communities over 50,000, what we've seen are getting anywhere from $200 per capita, which is Appleton, by example, $500 per capita, Sheboygan, which last time I checked is doing pretty well, with all due respect, to about $700 per capita in Milwaukee. The council's resolution said, you know, essentially, it'd be nice if our national leaders could take the average per capita of what's going to the big cities and provide it to the smaller cities. In round numbers, that's, it looks like the metro cities in Wisconsin, with a total population of about 1,860,000, are getting $788 million in Rescue Act funding. So on average, $423 per capita, right in that range we've talked about. The non-metro cities, villages, and towns, with a total population of just shy of 4 million, about 3,940,000, are receiving 400 million total in Rescue Act funding. That's, well, that's because we all get the same. It's about $100 per capita. So, yeah, Appleton's getting twice as much per capita, Milwaukee's getting seven times as much, but on average, there's $4.23 per person going to those metro communities, at least in Wisconsin, compared to, what did I just say, compared to 100 bucks, 423 compared to 100. And I'm sorry, I know council all felt very strongly on this, there ain't no equity in that. And we, you'll be copied on communications going out this week. I got these numbers late last week on this last slide, I wanted to vet them a little, but those, I was looking still for, I'm sorry, still was looking for numbers nationwide, not going to wait any longer for that. The numbers in Wisconsin alone tell a story. And the crazy thing is, I'm sorry, but with all of the money that's been appropriated under two previous relief bills, and now this one, I don't think any of us are suggesting that our federal government adds any more to the spending for this. There'll be unspent money within this massive bill that could be reallocated to do a much better job of addressing the needs of small cities. I think the total pot for cities, towns, and villages is about 65 billion. That's a huge number, but 65 billion out of 1.9 trillion. So, and I understand counties nationwide got equivalent allocations, all based on population. So Manitowoc County's getting about $15 million, for example. But what the counties are getting is proportionate in population, population or per capita terms to what other counties are getting. On the city-town-village side of things, it's not even close to being equitable. So, keep delivering that message, if you have occasion to reach out to any of our federal representatives, and to our state reps who maybe could, you know, rattle some chains on this issue. Mark already mentioned, and this is another major intergovernmental effort locally, we've had a joint arrangement since the early 2000s, about 2010, I think, with the city of Manitowoc and the Manitowoc Area Visitor Convention Bureau, now more like 15 years. It is formalized in a three-year tourism services agreement that comes up for renewal periodically. The current tourism services agreement with our partners at Manitowoc and the Visitor Convention Bureau runs out at the end of this year. And to that end, there's been discussion at the Room Tax Commission here, and the Room Tax Commission in Manitowoc, as well as the VCB Board, about what people might want to see in a successor to that agreement. Our Room Tax Commission has spent a fair amount of time on that in closed session in recent meetings, because it relates to negotiations, and we'll be airing some of those interests on Two Rivers' behalf at that joint meeting, which, again, open to the public. It will be at Manitowoc City Hall in their council chambers.
I believe, Greg, it will be televised, so the community can watch the session in action.
It would be, it should be on the city of Manitowoc Facebook page.
And in fairness, the position of Two Rivers is, we believe, as I believe, the committee believes, we are stronger, working together as two combined communities with the objective to develop tourism. We do have some challenges from our partner down south, but hopefully we resolve them and work forward together collectively, because we're stronger together than we are separately.
Yep. We are very proud of the role that Two Rivers and Two Rivers People play on the Visitor Convention Bureau Board. Councilmember Bittner is this council's appointed rep to that board, as well as serving on the Room Tax Commission. So, stay tuned, I expect we'll have a report back at the April 19th council meeting. And per council action at the March 15 regular meeting, closed session discussion, then a vote, and open. Notice did go out last Friday to the Progress Lake Shore Board President and Executive Director, notifying them that the city of Two Rivers' participation in Progress Lake Shore will end at the end of our current year. The city did forward its contribution for 2021 along with that notification. Before sending it, I did reach out by phone and talk to Sam Graich, the board president, as well as to the director at Progress Lake Shore, and did send an email out with copy of that letter to our municipal partners, those being the city of Manitowoc, city of Keel, and village of Mishikot. So, that is official, and I thought it was well, since that was after a closed session, it's in the minutes, but we should let the community know of that action. As always, I would remind folks that exploretworivers.com is the comprehensive up-to-date source for Two Rivers' activities and events. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Let's go to the consent agenda, number 10 on the agenda for tonight. One is a presentation of minutes. We have a city council regular meeting, March 15, 2021, and a work session for March 29, 2021. Recommended action there is a motion to waive the reading and adopt those minutes. We have two reports on minutes of meetings from the Room Tax and Personal and Finance Committee, motion to receive and place those on file. And we have the summary of verified bills for the month of March for $4,157,141.60, motion to receive and place that on file as well. We have two applications for temporary Class B license. One is the Two Rivers Youth Sports Prices Right Game Show, that's coming up on May 8, 2021, put that on your calendars. The second one is Two Rivers Youth Sports Beach Bash, which I mentioned earlier, which is going to be June 25th to 26th, and that's going to be from noon to 11:30 PM. The recommended action on there is a motion to approve the application and authorize the city clerk to issue those Class B licenses. So I'm looking for a recommended action for the consent agenda, a motion to approve it with the various actions recommended, and I will let you know, because we have someone involved with the Beach Bash as well as the game show, he's able to abstain if he chooses to do that, rather than voting all in favor. So I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda with the various actions recommended.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, so any other discussion regarding the consent agenda tonight?
Yeah. I want to publicly acknowledge, Adam, you abstained from voting because you're involved with Beach Bash, but welcome back to Two Rivers, we're so glad you're back in Two Rivers with Beach Bash. So, thank you.
Awesome. Agreed. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All abstaining?
Aye.
All opposed? No one? Motion carries, let's move forward. Thank you. City council formal items, we have a handful tonight. Let's start with the first resolution, which is designating authorized signatories for claimant statements and other required documents bequest to the city of Two Rivers Fire and Police Departments by the late James Totti. A motion is to waive the reading and adopt the resolution. I'm looking for a motion on that first, before we go into some discussion. So, thank you, Kay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jay. Any other discussion on this before we go into it?
On this item, really, it's somewhat of a housekeeping item, but the insurance company that administered these policies for Mr. Totti, Midland National, in their notifications to the police and fire departments as beneficiaries of these bequests of $73,898 each, does want a corporate resolution showing the authorized persons that can sign on behalf of the department. So, thought it was simpler to have the city manager, usually it's the signatory for city contracts. It should be noted that at the last meeting, regular meeting on March 15, the council did direct that these funds, when received, be deposited in the capital projects funds for the police and fire departments, and the chiefs will be back before any of those dollars are spent to present plans, recommendations to the council. I expect we'll be in a position to do that at the April 19th meeting. Not entirely sure, but that's what we're shooting for. So this, this would authorize the city manager to sign off on behalf of the fire and police departments, so the city clerk can return this resolution to the insurance company.
Thank you, Greg. And the details are all in packet, page number 68 of your documents, if you want to reference that. So, any other discussion regarding this?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to point out that the, I agree with this, the city should, and the fire and the chief will manage the, police will manage the funds. The capital fund will allow them, as donations are normally provided to capital funds, will allow them to use the funding for anything they see necessary other than pure capital expenditures.
Right. With the council's approval.
With the council approval.
Yes, I would just say things like citizen donations for fire prevention, education activities, or citizen donations for education enforcement initiatives of the police department typically go to those funds. So, if there are specific capital items, that would be appropriate if there are, and I don't think anybody's looking at these bequests supplanting anything in the normal operating budgets, that wasn't the intent, but if there are programmatic initiatives that are impactful, those could either be done out of the capital funds, or the chiefs would identify, you know, maybe it does end up maybe in a separate fund that's established, but we can account for that, and that will be addressed when they come to council.
Thank you. We look forward to their recommendations. Any other discussion? Because it's a resolution, Jamie, I'm asking you to do a roll call, please.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
John Casvand.
Aye.
Kay Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
All yeses.
Thank you, Jamie. We're moving on to B, which is an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code, Section 1-2-1, entitled License, Permit, and Other Fees Established to Amend Select License/Permit Descriptions and Fees to Add Cemetery Deed Exchange Administration Fees of $50 Per Transaction and Amend 7-5-9 of the Municipal Code, entitled Regulations for Monuments, Markers, Urns, Planting, and Fences. I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance change.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who said that? I'm sorry, I heard two people say it. Kay, we'll take, Kay has the second. Thank you, Kay. Any discussion, anything you want to go over in detail regarding the ordinance?
Terry is available, if you have any questions.
And it's in our packet, too, it's number 93, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is the biggest change really the size of the markers? I guess you guys are wondering what we're talking about. You want to explain a little bit more of what's changing?
The current ordinance states that a single grave marker is, the length can be up to 24 inches, and we're asking that it's changed to 30 inches. This came up at the advisory board meeting with a citizen that has a lengthy name, so they're looking for a longer stone to appropriate their name.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie?
Are you asking to change all grave markers or the new ones?
Just new.
Okay, and I was just wondering, what does, let's see, I wrote it down, what's a deed exchange of grave markers? Just curious.
So this actually has never come up before, this is the first time, so we haven't had an ordinance, let me get my notes out here quick. Should've went to the podium. We did some research, we had two families recently just that had called, they have purchased plots, and they no longer would like those plots, so to do that, we have to get the deed back sent to the city, so we have never had a fee for that. So we contacted local cemeteries to see what other people were doing, and Evergreen has a $110 fee, Knollwood has a $299 fee per transaction for just administrative work. Tammy Stadler has been working on this with the two different families, and it's taken an extensive amount of time, so this is just something new to add to the ordinance.
It's a simple $50 fee, it's well below the two you just cited, correct?
Correct.
Okay, does that answer your question, Bonnie? Okay. Any other discussion regarding the change, the potential change of the ordinance? Okay, so we've got, because it's an ordinance change, I'm looking, Jamie, for a roll call again.
John Casvand.
Aye.
Kay Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Wawuski.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
All yeses.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for accommodating long names and short names. We'll go to number C, authorize, authorization to proceed with Transform Two Rivers Housing Assistant Program Using Affordable Housing Funds From C, From City Tax Incremental Financing. Motion is to authorize the program as recommended by the Community Development Authority, which is the CDA, if you hear that acronym thrown around. Elizabeth, do you want to explain a little bit more of what exactly we're talking about here, and that Transform Two Rivers, to give a little bit more beef to it? In the package, it's number, page number 96.
In your packet is a summary memo, and then following that is the actual application that we put together, that's in draft form still, describing the program in more detail. So, in summary, what this is, is staff has been working on housing initiatives, and this one is specifically focused on TIDs that have been extended by this body over time for one more year. And state law allows for that one additional year to capture those dollars to be used for affordable housing. And so we put together a program that has been vetted by the BIDC and CDA together for this, for this initiative to use these dollars specifically for affordable housing uses. And the intention is to use the TID 3, 4, and 5 that have been extended one more year to allocate these dollars toward affordable housing with the focus of exterior home improvements and curb appeal type of improvements. That was the direction staff was geared to go towards, and so the program is targeting exterior improvements such as painting, removal of, a lot of the older homes have asbestos siding, new doors, gutters, landscaping, and overall cleanup of the outside of the property. All projects will be inspected upon completion. So, again, in summary, the maximum loan is $10,000. And, again, because we have to have an affordability component to this, we've decided to go the route of 120% of the median home value. So we will determine that upon the applicant's submittal, and look at that, and that will pretty much put us within a very affordable range. And in the packet, we have just, we have an example of that, let me just turn the page one more time, and I think we have 93,000, oh, I'm sorry, 94,300 is that number as an example, that's 120% of our median house value now, which is 113,600, based on current census data that we have. So, everyone is eligible who falls within the eligibility parameters that we've just described. However, within our packet, too, we do have a map of target areas that the city committee members have directed us to look at, some corridors that they looked at as entryways into the community, to sort of target the efforts of these dollars upon review of the applications. So we're looking at staff and the CDA as the primary implementation bodies of this program, and I guess I will take questions at this point, that's pretty much an overall summary.
Well, I'll add, the total is, of those three TIDs, is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
That's a ballpark figure.
Roughly.
Yeah.
And we're talking about a maximum loan of ten thousand per household that fits the qualifications that you just described.
Right.
And we also will post, well, how would these people know, Elizabeth, that they're eligible? Meaning, we're talking about possibly the corridors that are most visible when you're coming to town as being kind of the first charter, if you would, of our efforts. How do they know, I'm in that corridor?
Well, we've talked about it a lot of different ways to let people know. Of course, tonight is our first wave of letting people know. We have, we work a lot with inspections, and there are different times of the year, usually in spring, they go out. And so, while this is an incentive, that is sort of the other hand of enforcement, I don't really like to use that part of the word, but when they go out and need to send out letters, this information upon approval will also accompany that. We also include other housing assistance, like the CDBG language program. That is also, that was included in the last time that we sent out. So, that's another affordability program that we have, too. So, that's one way in which we intend to let people know. We also talked about doing specific mailings for these corridors to let people know, sort of a direct mail. We will be putting it on our websites as we update pages, also very slowly. We have updated the webpage about housing for our CDBG program that is existing, and so that's what we also intend to do for this one.
Thank you. Any questions? Mark?
You know, I love every part of this. I think it's a worthy cause to improve our community. I love everything but.
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 Page seven. Okay.
And I'm wondering if this is a requirement by the state to have this in this?
Can you be specific?
Because in page seven, being specific.
Yes.
Here's what I don't like about it.
Okay.
The borrower is to provide matching funds.
Oh.
One dollar for every two dollars borrowed, okay? And here's what I don't like about it. We're going to use this money to hopefully improve people who need money for housing improvement. A lot of these people are going to be hard-pressed just to be able to repay our very appealing interest rates on the loan. They're going to be difficult to achieve an additional dollar for every two dollars they borrow, because they have to go to the private sector, and banks may not be able to approve them. They may not have the financial ability to approve those people. So, what I'm asking is, I love the concept, but do we have to have the borrower is to provide matching funds for every dollar, a dollar for every two dollars borrowed? Can we just loan them the money at the lucrative interest rate and not force them to go out and try to get private financing, which they, in most cases, are not going to be able to do?
Well, the intention of the group's discussion regarding that, and Kurt is on the committee, and so is Darla, was that they needed to have some skin in the game, and so fifty percent.
Was that a consensus of the group?
It was. We had the draft before you after two vettings and two meetings. Fifty percent of the loan amount asked was to be provided by the borrower or the applicant. That was what they decided, but obviously you all can speak to this and give some more feedback to this program's discussion.
Go ahead, Greg. If I could, too, Mark, I think the committee discussed and staff had discussed, this is a pretty limited pot of money, even if we just target the target areas that are shown. While this may be the lead piece, if, we also want to maximize use here in the city of the Regional Revolving Loan Fund that Brown County administers through CDBG. So, if it turns out somebody is in a position where they're a low to moderate income household, they're below those income guidelines, it's entirely possible that most or all of their financing needs might be better met by that program, or it could supplement this one. So, that could be part of the magic of this, because I know the committee, in addition to wanting to leverage the TIF-related dollars here with bank loans or equity, that could likewise be leveraging money from another program, or programs that are specifically for lower-income homeowners.
And I have full disclosure. My wife, who is a banker, was, is very much opposed to this, is on the committee, and she may be in the minority, but she going to have, she said there's going to be difficulty for many people to be able to, be able to meet the ability to get private financing for every one dollar of two dollars they borrow. And I'm just saying that if it's to improve things for people who need improvement and don't have the ability, let's use the money and not shackle them with the difficulty of private financing. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Bonnie?
I'm going to vote against this. I especially don't like it that landlords get some of this money. So, much of this property is rental, and I know already, some of you have said you don't like, you want austere parking in the winter, you don't like all those cars on the lawn. On these streets, those cars are on the lawn all the time. There aren't enough garages, and I'm not going to vote for a landlord to improve his home so he can raise the rent. The thing is, this is for homeowners. They have to be able to come up with something, Mark. They get ten thousand bucks, they only have to come up with five thousand. And I guess if they can't afford that, they almost have to move out of their home. And I, for those of you who think I'm a real hard bleep, I did notice that council members aren't eligible for this, and I don't care about that. I wouldn't come to it anyway. I just, these things where you keep helping the poor, do you ever see how many drug activities come in these neighborhoods? I mean, I just, that, I'm not going to go on too much, but that's, I'm not voting for this.
Thank you, Bonnie. Kay, your hands up.
In the spring of the year, the triad group with the police department, does a canvas of the city, and would a recommendation from them on any property that they find in sad shape carry any kind of weight?
Sure, and I think that'd be a great way to disseminate the information as well about this program and the CDBG program that also helps people of low to moderate income.
They do it in the spring of the year, and then later in the summer, and we look for code violations.
Sure.
And then the community service officer goes to work on that. But we come up against some that really could use some of.
Sure. And to, if I could speak to just a couple of the points that have been raised tonight, all very good ones. I did make known that Mrs. Bittner, who is on the committee, said specifically that she did not want the matching fund component, and that was discussed extensively. She was not able to make it to that meeting, and I did share that for the discussion. It's a valid point, but we could, to Greg's point, raise the issue of those who can't make this LMI criteria. There's the income-based review for the other CDBG fund that's available.
Kay?
So, when we make this loan out, who is the loan from, and who do they pay back?
The loan.
What happens if they default and not pay it back?
Well, I mean, you're asking great questions. There is, there's, one of the pages in the back has sort of all the loan application criteria in terms of, in your packet. You know, it just has all the things they need to supply. The CDA will basically be the implementation group that will review the loan application and all the things that must be in place. So, the loan comes from this pot of funds that's in the summary memo that has compiled all the TID extra dollars that were allocated as a result of the resolutions that have been passed, setting aside those dollars that have been sitting there waiting to be used for affordable housing. So, they're not being used at this moment, and so that's what they're for, and that's what we decided to target it for, because the law says they have to be used for affordable housing.
I guess, I guess my main concern is, what happens if it doesn't get paid back?
Well, we will, we will have a mortgage, a mortgage will be taken out. We will have some form of security, and we will do it like any other loan.
So, this is the city doing this?
Correct. We will be implementing this through the CDA as sort of the implementation and review body, but staff will be coordinating this like we do any other loan process. We will do a review, we will do a title search, we will execute a security instrument, and we will have a lien or a mortgage on the property to get repaid for the loan.
If I could build on that, we felt right now.
Well, I'll just end that, I'm not in favor in this. The city is not a bank. It's an awesome program. I like, I like the idea behind it, but I just don't think the city should be in the banking business. That's it.
Well, unfortunately, right now, the hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that's the extra TID money that's supposed to be used for low housing, is not being used. So, it's sitting in a bank doing nothing, and we felt like it should at least be offered up to citizens who could use it and at least be put to good use to be able to help improve their homes. So, without that, it just sits in a bank and does nothing. So, that's one reason why, was like, how do we control making sure we at least put it back to good use for the city? That was, that was really the debate in CDA and BIDC. No different than in RLF, where we're loaning money potentially to businesses coming to town. It's the same, similar thing, but this is not to the law's end.
Correct. I mean, many, many cities do this to help with their housing stock. I mean, if we haven't looked at our valuation lately, there, it's extremely low for the city of Two Rivers. So, this is one way to address our low valuation rates and to work on improving homes. And again, the target areas are those where you're driving through frequently to, and they need some attention. And so, this is one way of providing an incentive for the improvement to the properties that are not being improved at this time.
Adam had his hand up before. I'll go to Adam now.
I will say, I do agree with some of what Mark said, and I do agree a lot with what Bonnie said. I was under a different impression, and that's my fault. I thought that this money would be, we would be giving it to these people based on them investing so much money into their house, not necessarily a loan that we got paid back. What do we do with that money from those TID districts that will stay in this fund? Is this something that we do every year or every ten years, once all the money is paid back?
It would be a revolving fund, so it would still be available for people to continue to invest in their homes.
Okay.
So, theoretically, they will all pay them the loans back, and we will continue to be able to loan them out. So, this is the first iteration. I proposed, too, it would be an investment in curb appeal, and then the other would be in something else, some other structural improvement in their home. The committee decided to just gear it on exterior improvements to work on some of these that need some attention. So, this was sort of our first step into the realm of investing in housing in addition to the current CDBG offering that we have. Because we are a non-entitlement city, some of the things that we spoke to earlier about the budget constraints that smaller communities have, we don't have this plethora of CDBG dollars everywhere, so we have to turn to other sources. And one of the sources that communities use are their TID dollars when their TIDs have expired. So, you can.
Any other discussion? Mark?
Just to circle back, then, this is a approved way to use TID monies for this community development and approved. To answer further Jay's question, yes, the people who receive this will be responsible paying back the city on some very favorable terms to do that, and they may not get the opportunity otherwise to make, improve, and curb appeal and all the benefits. But my problem is that we are going to limit people who want to use this because they're not going to be able to get private banking money, because they can't afford it. They don't have the credit capability to do it. So, it's a worthwhile goal, but given the fact that, and I don't think we're mandated to do it this way, private financing, it is a, here's a tool to use to improve the community. Well, by the way, you can't use the tool, because you don't have the, if they had the money in the first place, they probably would have fixed the house. Now, we're making it even more difficult. But that's it enough.
Any other discussion? Bonnie?
I want to just, how come none of you answered me about these landlords? It's especially in here about these landlords.
Yes, it is. Would you like, can I speak to that point, Bonnie? Or some of the discussion about that was simply, there is a limitation to the landlords. So, we, because there is rental property in these, particularly in these corridors that we flagged as target areas, they still are, some of them are in need of attention. So, with the, with that in mind, there was a limitation to allow rental properties for landlords that do not own more than two. And they are also limited in, I'm sorry, I was just going to add.
To rental or to homes?
To rental, separate entities. So, he could not, he or she could not own like a ton of rental properties everywhere and just not maintain them. So, that was, that was the point of that, because if you have, you know, a wonderful house and a wonderful house, and then a bad rental, and then a bad rental. So, the point was to still maintain them by not restricting all rentals, but there was going to be a limit on the number of owners of the ones that the landlord would own.
You know, the thing is, they're landlords. They're going to fix them up and raise the rent. I mean, and they're not poor people, Mark. They're not people that can't afford it.
That was addressed directly to me. Bonnie, I'm thinking of the kids who may live with parents that have to rent, and they run down, they're going, the kids, the community is going to feel better with improvement there. I like the idea of restricting to the landlord, but I'm thinking of the people who live in the community and in general curb appeal for the balance of the neighbors. They may want this improved, because it's going to hurt, improve their property value, too. So, as long as we control that, Bonnie, the people will benefit from this. I'm not, again, for the private financing.
I mean, I guess from a.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, from a staff perspective, I mean, just some form of a housing improvement program, that's an incentive, that's sort of the goal here. So, if there's a suggested modification, you know, that's also, of, we just hope that we can move something forward that's on the incentive side, so we're not just strictly moving in the enforcement realm. So, we have something together, you know, that can move forward to help.
And I applaud the fact we're trying to move forward with something, because based on all the research and surveys that you just got done doing.
Right.
And looking at it, forty-four percent of the people commented back on how shabby some of the housing's looking in Two Rivers, and it's not helping the community look favorable or attract other people to move here as a result of not having it kept up. So, we're trying to figure out, how do we do that if we've got funds available to be able to help people at least get low-interest loans to be able to fix up their homes, whether it be grants or whether it be loans, is what we're trying to figure out.
But one more comment, thirty percent of our housing units are rental, right? And that's not a normal percentage either of the cities, because I've been going to the planning committee and finding that out. And what happened, what about the people that want single-family homes?
We would love, if anyone's listening, please come build one. We need, we need them to be built in this community. That's a great point, Bonnie.
And they don't have to just build them, they can buy an older home and improve it.
That's another great point.
That's what people on my side are doing.
Well, and that's why these funds are here, to help improve the existing stock of housing that we do have.
But we're moving too slow for you. Sorry about that. And I know that it takes a long time. The people on my street, I mean, they've been working on it twenty years, some of those people.
Well, here's another tool for them. That's what we're trying to do.
If you want a suggestion, I make a motion that we approve this.
Okay.
But remove the requirement that they have to secure private financing. This is a worthy way to use the money, but don't shackle people who are tight financially. Remove the portion, one dollar for every two dollars borrowed, because they're not going to do it. They aren't going to be able to achieve it, is my opinion. Anybody second that motion?
I don't know. I'll ask. Anybody going to second that motion?
You're making a motion to do that?
Yes, I'm making a motion that we continue with this, just as it's written. But I'm, Bonnie, let me finish. Here's my motion.
The money is going on, it's the other way.
If anyone looks at page seven, you just simply strike the line that says, the borrower is required to provide matching funds, one dollar for every two dollars.
Okay, Mark, you put that motion out there, looking for a second?
That's my motion.
Is anybody going to second it? If not, we can move on as well. So, anybody want to second that motion? Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the, I got to read it. All right. We have a motion to accept the authorization for Transform Two Rivers Housing Assistance Using the Funds As Stated or As Outlined In This Package?
I'm not going to make a motion, but can I make a suggestion?
Yes, you may.
I see where Mark's coming from, but I, I think they do need some skin in the game. Maybe one for every $3 is a little steep. Maybe it could be, I'm one for every two, I'm sorry, but maybe it could be one for every four, one for every five. But I, I think they, something that's more attainable, but they do need to have some skin in the game if we're doing it this way. And I also think we should circle back on, on Bonnie's point with, you know, are we helping out drug houses? I mean, I know there are houses in our community, and we need them to be updated, but is that the right approach to updating people that probably aren't going to pay you back? That are going to possibly end up in jail, and they're not going to return that money? I, I don't know.
I think, it's got to go through a vetting process, and I think I agree with you guys, it has to go through a vetting process and making sure it's the right person doing the right thing. I also agree that there needs to be skin in the game. So whether it's one to four, one to five, but there needs to be some skin in the game. I would agree with you on both of those things. However, I can't make a judgment on who's a drug house and who's not a drug house. I can't make a judgment on who's a good landlord or a bad landlord. So that's not our decision here at council to make. It's to basically say, do we have a program that allows low-income housing to be able to take out a loan, low-interest loan, and have some skin in the game, I don't disagree with you there, to be able to get and improve their house? They have to still fill out an application, it still has to go through a vetting process. We still have to understand if they can afford to do it or not, whether they finance it, whether they pay in cash their down payment. It has to still go through that vetting process to say, how are we using those funds? And is it improving? What are they planning to do with the money? And is it going to improve the, the visual aspect as well as potentially the value of households, not only the ones they live in, but hopefully households around it? Jay?
Like I said, I agree that this program is nice. I like the point, or I think the point of having skin in the game is a valid one. The other question I have is, who, who is the one that makes the call on distributing this fund? Funds? The CDA?
We were thinking that the process would be, an application would come to staff, and then we would present the application at the next CDA meeting. And so we would have, of course, we have Betty, which is great because she's a banker, and then we would have other people within that committee serve as the review committee.
There's currently how many on CDA right now?
Oh, I, I don't know.
About, about seven, 10? Seven?
Okay, thank you.
So there's seven people, a couple council people, and the rest are made up of private citizens. Jay? How about Jay?
Adam.
Adam?
Who at staff does that go to?
At, who, at staff?
Can you speak to that? When, when you said it goes to staff first before CD?
It would be me.
Just you?
Yeah.
Is that something that can go to the police department to verify if, if we have existing problems with something like that?
Well, since that came up, it wasn't something I actually thought of, so of course, we could coordinate and, and do that as part of the background, because we will be doing a title search, we will be checking other information that you would do as part of a loan review. And so we can certainly add that on to something.
It may not be 100% effective, but it's going to be better than zero.
To the extent we're able to review that, yes.
If there's anything ownership as far as if they got an outstanding warrant or anything like that.
Yeah, and any code violations, we of course are going to, that's going to be part of it as well.
So if we could work that in, I think that's something that I think you were talking about. We'll have to figure that out in the motion that ever, if we get a motion that comes up. Phil?
I think. Hold on. I think this is a good starting program, a good place to start, right? You know, we have this program for a year or so, and we, you're definitely going to find out what the problems are.
Of course.
And we can always revisit it and change it. So I think this is a good place to start it in. So if you, what did you say, 94,000, 100, 94 to 113,000?
Oh.
So what's that, nine or 11 loans? That's, you know.
137,000, 10,000, 13,000.
Estimated pot.
14 loans. And that can go pretty quick.
It, well, hopefully people will take advantage of it.
Oh. But I think, I mean, we should go with this as a start, starting point, then we can always revisit it.
So I'm looking then for a motion, guys.
But I want one more comment. Revolving loan fund, we've done this before, and some of these houses, the money gets tied up, and there isn't money, because they have 10 years to pay or some kind of thing like that. And besides, you're making all these motions and things, and you're still not clarifying. Are you going to give them $1 for every five or one to two, which is reasonable? And are the landlords not, the landlords should be putting in one to two?
I'm looking for a motion to clarify it, Bonnie. So if I'm saying, what is the motion? I'm hearing us talk about skin in the game, not skin in the game, landlords, not landlords. Do we take the motion as is laid out, or do we modify it and make a motion with those adjustments or changes and then vote on it? Whether it's the landlord issue or the dollar, skin in the game, whatever that number is, that's what I'm looking for from this body.
You sit on the board, does anyone else?
Dar, Dar.
Darla.
Can you two, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you two have some kind of an idea as to what you'd want to put forth for a motion, and you sat on the board and you listened to the discussion? Possibly, or do you want that to come solely from somebody else that didn't go through all that? Out of courtesy, because you guys sat through it.
What we arrived at was after a great deal of discussion and revision, and a lot of what you guys are bringing up as points, you know, topic speaking points that we also discussed, and we felt that this was the fairest and most equitable. I definitely understand people's concerns, but worked through all these, and we came up with the best decision possible. And I can understand, Mark, with you saying that, you know, just go ahead and have a, have a, a loan, you know, and don't have any, you know, monies that needs, need to match, whatever the ratio is. I understand that, but then, Jay, you had said something about, you know, the, the city is not a bank. You know, this is, this is a very good opportunity for people who are serious about wanting to improve their, their properties. This is, this is something that's going to be very beneficial. And honestly, I, if, if somebody is not really committed and serious about improving their, their property, they're not going to be going through all of this. You know, so it's not like we're just throwing money out at people, saying, hey, fix up your house, you know, and then it, it gets abused. We're not saying that at all. But we arrived at our conclusions based on a lot of discussion.
So I'll piggyback on that, and whether, we said skin in the game, I think we all agreed to agree on that. So whether it's one to two, or one to three, or one to four, I think we're flexible with that. I think the committee agreed that we have to have some skin in the game. It's not a grant, it is a loan. We also agree that there's a vetting process through, through the application that has to be done. I like the fact, and it did not come up, to have the police actually, you know, review it as well, just in case of the issue that came up out of the conversation, which is why we have these conversations. I think that's a good thing to add to it. But I do think the vetting of one, having some skin in the game is an appropriate thing for us to have.
Mr. President, I, I have a question. And skin in the game, obviously, you're committed to that, no doubt about it.
Representing the committee.
I know, but, but did the committee then take a look at what skin in the game it means and what's really? A private institution, I don't think, will be second choice to the city of Two Rivers first to have, sign up collateral to their mortgage on their home. I don't think a private bank would allow to take a second place to the city first. And did you get into that, Elizabeth?
Elizabeth?
Thank you, Council President. We did, and we discussed the mortgage position multiple times. As you can appreciate, Betty has a banker's position.
And I don't know what you said.
The city has one also.
Right.
So we didn't declare who would have first.
So you're going to enter?
We will, we will review that in the vetting process of the loan. So we don't have that, it's going to be a case-by-case review, and some people will not apply for a loan at all.
But are they qualified to get the second half of their funding?
That will be part of the review process.
But no, the bank, does a bank allow a second-place position? I don't think they will on a mortgage.
As a practical matter, no bank's going to take a backseat to a public entity. That'd be unique to my experience, certainly.
What I'm saying is.
But the question is, how much val, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
But the question is, if the bank doesn't do it, and you got to get a dollar for every $2, and the bank won't allow it.
Well, first of all, we're, we're talking about.
Let me finish, Mr. President. So if we're setting up a program that won't work with a bank, why are we doing it?
Because, Mark, it doesn't have to mean, if, if I want to borrow $5,000, and we change it to one and five, I'm just making that number up, and I only need to come up with $1,000, they don't have to go to a bank and get that money. They may be able to have that money to say, I can get a $5,000 loan if I give you $1,000 down.
Good point.
They may be able to do that. You're assuming that every down payment's got to go to a bank.
Well, I'm assuming.
And the bank's going to then take second position, and it's always going to be $10,000. It might be $2,000.
If these people have the money, then they may take steps and improve it. So I would be more comfortable to stretch it out, maybe one to five, and make it easier for people to use our money.
Bottom line, we're trying to do this. We're trying to serve up a solution for people who can't get any help in fixing up their homes. And we've got a lot of homes out there that need help, whether it's a gutter, whether it's getting their landscaping done, whether it's just painting their house. And we're saying, it doesn't have to be a full-blown remodeling, but if you need that, we'll be here to give you assistance and not jeopardizing the city as being a bank, but leveraging the funds that are available that we already have to turn back to the citizens to let them do that.
And I agree, make it easy for them, one to five then. Why do you make it one to two? That's hard.
It's a starting point, Mark. We haven't done this program ever, so.
Well, let's see how it works. Get it easy and get going.
Anything else you want to add, Elizabeth, before I go for another motion?
No, I'm just waiting and hoping someone will make a motion to pass this. I think it's a great program.
Anything you would like to say, Mr. City Manager?
I'm not sure.
Okay, then.
I got to have my hand up.
Then we'll move on.
No, thank you. You know, I guess, there are, I will say something, you know, if I miss the chance. There are programs out there to help folks that income-qualified qualify for 0% fully-deferred CDBG-type loans. I don't know house by house the people on these target streets, but there are also, like, maybe some young aspirational people that bought a house and they want to fix it up, and they get the idea of saving some money, or they're bankable to get a loan. And we're, it's not just a social welfare program, we're helping them step up and, and own homes in the community. So this is one facet of, of a program.
It's no different than, we're going to have a conversation about leveraging TID-13 and seeing if we can help businesses.
We don't want to, you know, this isn't even income-qualified right now. It's based on the median home value in the community, defining what affordable housing is, so.
So I'm looking for a motion to, whether we want to table this, whether we want to modify what's in front of us, but we have a, a, a transfer to Rivers Housing Assistance Program in front of us right now that can be modified based on this council's feedback. Do I have any adjustment or a motion that anybody wants to mention?
I'll make a motion to authorize the program as recommended by the Community Development Authority, but we will make some changes, which is one to five. There will be a background check in the vetting process, I believe is what Elizabeth said, vetting process, which will come back to the police department, the police chief and his staff, to verify there are no warrants, there, it's not a current drug house or anything of that nature. And I think we should address the point of Bonnie with, with landlords. Maybe they, they should be one to two, and they should have to have more skin in the game. They're making money on this, and I, I, I don't know that they should be getting the same rate as some person that really can't afford it, or a new person that, that needs help. The new person isn't making money on their house, landlord is.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any more discussion regarding this? I'm not sure legally we can, I'm just going to ask a question to our city attorney, if I can have a, here's what we do for private residents, and here's the one-to-two ratio for landlords. I'm not sure we can differentiate the two and have those in there. If the vetting process is exhaustive, meaning we're looking at everything, what they have, income, so on and so forth, and if they're a landlord or resident, can't we make that decision when we're looking at the application as to whether or not we need a little bit more from them, rather than having it in the policy? I'm not sure that we can legally do that. I'm asking you. I want to make sure before we, I want to make sure before we vote on this, that we're not walking ourselves into, walking down a slippery slope here.
I just wanted to clarify, Kurt, though, if I understand Adam's motion right, it would embed in the policy a statement that there's a, I'll call it a 20%, 20% or a one for five.
Yes.
And help me out, is that $1 for every five of total project, or one for every five of, of loan money?
Loan money, I think. I think we should be project, you shouldn't have to be forced to get a loan.
Okay, so.
You could stick in money from yourself. You don't have to necessarily get a loan.
Okay.
Right? Or is that a requirement to get a loan? I didn't see it in there, but, okay.
It could be another loan.
You do not have to go get a loan to get a loan.
That, that's what, I didn't think you did, but that's.
It's just a, a down payment.
Right. But you're, to my original point, you, you are saying that the policy will be, there's one matching requirement for owner-occupied homes, there's a different matching requirement for rental properties.
Right. And that's what I was trying to get clarification, Greg.
But that would be, that would be a policy, something laid out in policy, it still raises the question, which may require some more research, I'm hearing.
Phil? We make sure that we say non-resident landlord, because if he's a resident landlord, then he should be able to get the same as, 20% as anybody else.
You live in a duplex, half of it's rental.
You want to clarify that motion?
Yep, yes, I will.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
I'll say.
Okay. So it's, the language is, non-resident landlord is different than resident landlord, correct? Okay.
Like as in living there, not living in the city.
Right. Resident on the property.
Resident on the property. That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
So one and five, so for every, it's 20 cents of the dollar, 20, yeah, 20 cents of the dollar, if I'm doing my math right, that they have to come up with, or down payment or whatever. And again, it's up to $10,000. They can do whatever, if it's 500, 250, whatever.
So just to make, if it's a $10,000 project, and it's a not, a landlord that doesn't reside on the property is the applicant, they've got the requirement to come up with $5,000.
That's right.
Yeah, $5,000.
That's the motion, right.
If it's a owner-occupied structure, not a rental in any way, single-family owner-occupied, it's $2,000 on a $10,000 project.
And we can outline those examples in the final document, just as you did here.
I, I might mention too, Mr. President, we might want to bring back a, a resolution that just purely for purposes of saying what you're doing with the TIF money codifies this, because earlier, when these were originally approved, these one-year extensions, we thought the top-of-the-list item would be replacing lead service laterals for homes, which we've been big into, as you know, for a while. With the recent initiatives in federal and state funding, it doesn't, it doesn't look like that's going to be a need, that's going to be met from elsewhere. But if this program piece is approved, it would just be to codify for the TIF files that this is now the affordable housing activity in question. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Amy, I'm going to ask you to do a roll call, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
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 Thank you for all the spirited conversation and getting us through that. Thank you, Elizabeth, for putting together the outline to help us get more education. The next one is authorizing to promote the availability of TID 13 funding assistance for downtown area commercial projects. A motion to authorize the outreach program. We're gonna talk about that here in a second. We have, is this document referring to that?
This relates to that item, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And this actually came up, and I want to thank you, Adam, for that. He sent an email a couple, a week or so ago suggesting if we've got a TID already established on TID 13, and it is aging, so every day it goes by, it's maturing, and we're not leveraging some of the dollars that are there, could we leverage some of those dollars to help some downtown areas get projects done, similar to the conversation we just had on residents? But it's got a bucket of money that's able to potentially be considered. So in front of us, Greg, if you want to walk us through the proposal and then off of the map, correct?
Yes, I apologize for the handout tonight. All that was in your packets was this basic map that shows the boundaries of TID number eight, thirteen, sorry, and the half-mile radius around it. Now, one thing to clarify, and again, Adam had reached out on this, and we had a quick email exchange. I agreed to put it on tonight's agenda. TID 13 was put in place primarily, as you all know sadly, for a proposed Culvers development on the corner of 22nd and Washington. That didn't happen. However, we still have that tool in place. It covers the five-block area shown there, and it's shown in greater detail on the second page of what I just handed out. And it's not presently with any TIF revenues to spend, but it is an area where if someone was interested in investing further in an existing business, or taking some properties and redeveloping them, where if it could be shown that that project, because that's how TIF works, if it could be shown that that project adds, will add assessed value to the district, those dollars could be captured over, say, a 20-year term or thereabouts to aid and abet that development. The TIF plan for TID 13 as approved not only provided for specific assistance for a Culvers at the corner of 22nd and Washington, but it also said that other assistance to commercial development in the district or within half a mile of the district, if financially feasible, could be funded. So I'm not here tonight suggesting that we say that there could be TIF assistance outside the boundaries of the district in that half-mile radius, because right now there's no pot of money in TID 13. There's no, there's been no new valuation driving it. However, within that five-block area, which includes twenty, thirty-two commercially-zoned parcels.
What are those, Greg?
I'm sorry. Those are, if you're looking at the color map, I'm sorry, the TID 13 boundaries are in yellow. Properties that currently have B1 business district zoning are in orange. And then there is some nearby residential, I believe it is I2, one and two family, that's in blue. So here's my suggestion. I mean, the city could use this also to help with redevelopment of those residential properties as well, or if somebody wanted to rezone them to commercial and could get it done. But the fact is, what we've got is a tool, and the tool is only any good if there's a project or projects that will create new increment that can be spent. I'm suggesting a starting point here, which would be within the boundaries of what the council, that's a bad word, within the plan that the council has already approved, is to say, if you're within the boundaries of TID 13, and you're thinking about a possible development project, actually, if you'll turn to the second, first page of my handout, first page, the black and white page, as I understand it, the intent here would be to increase awareness of possible development assistance through TID 13 for redevelopment projects involving properties within the boundaries of the TID. I'm suggesting that to qualify for that assistance, projects would need to demonstrate the need for TIF assistance, because for the city to ever give TIF assistance to a business, the statute has a so-called BUT4 test, where your resolution and the joint review board's resolution say if it wasn't for the TIF assistance, this project wouldn't happen. So it'd have to meet, show that it would meet the BUT4 test. It would have to generate sufficient assessed valuation increment to support the assistance being provided. Say, say you're gonna build a building on a empty gas station lot downtown, and it was gonna be worth $200,000 assessed at the end of the day. Well, you could probably make a case for up to $40,000 to $50,000 of TIF assistance, because over a 20-year life cycle, the property taxes on that property should be able to cover that amount of assistance. So it'd have to be financially viable, and per statute, it would have to be the subject of a written agreement between the city and the developer. Now, this may not be a huge tool, but this would be immediately a way that we could let the people within this district, and I'm suggesting we'd also do a direct mail piece to all real estate offices in the county, saying, if you've got a listing here, or if you ever are called on to list any of these properties, or if you're looking for a site for redevelopment, this is only five blocks in our downtown, but we have this tool available.
Adam has a question.
This is gonna be pay as you go.
Another, another point, I'm sorry, that probably should be added to, it could be added to that language about a written agreement. It would, would be.
We're not gonna borrow for this. I don't, I shouldn't say, we're not gonna.
Well, I thought the understanding was always pay as you go.
My intent was not to borrow money.
Good point. I didn't cite that. I, I agree with you entirely on that.
So let me use a couple of examples of what in this boundary. One is the Unimart station right now that is empty, right, that we're trying to sell. That if we market it, that there's TIF assistance to help whoever wants to do something with it, that might help them, whether they gotta demo it or build a building, based on the value, it might help them. We got Rudy's Laneses in this, right?
Correct.
There, it's up for sale today. If someone buys it and says, hey, I'm gonna have to update whatever and put another $200,000 into bringing it up to code, there's potential TIF assistance to help them with this. If we don't have this, they're either having to go to a bank, they're having to come up with the money, they're having to figure out something else, or we're gonna have to figure out how we do the RLF for some type of loan. I love the opportunity to help those, those two examples of getting stability within our downtown area by offering some type of incentive for them to be able to look forward to, or look to leverage potentially.
And the majority of that corner across from QuickTrip, where Culvers was gonna go, is kind of deteriorating.
That whole road that was there before, right?
Yeah.
So using that as examples, just so everybody has their visuals now of what those potential, potentially be. Mark, you had a question?
Oh, I, I just wanted to confirm, two buildings on the corner, one of the prime corners of our community are both for sale. They could be stimulus. I guess the only question, but again, it may preclude development. I like the idea of existing, I like the orange idea. I'm a little less excited about the blue, but who knows, that could stimulate more commercial development too. So, you know, I love, I guess I like the concept. The white area, I'd suggest, based on the pay as we go, just an incentive tool to get something to happen.
And Ed, if you will, to your point, Mark, yeah, on the second page, and again, first page, I'm sorry, and I know this just got kind of put together quickly today, I'm suggesting the outreach, at least initially, would be direct mail to all the owners of commercially-zoned properties. Now, we could send letters to the owners of residential properties, but I think that might create more concern or confusion right now. It isn't, the city's not looking to see your house become something different, although we could tell people that, we could let people know about the program. But my thought was, direct mail, at a minimum, direct mail to the thirty-two parcel owners for the commercially-zoned parcels in this district and to realtors.
But I guess, Greg, if we look at the corner we just talked about.
Yep.
You look at those two blue parcels behind it.
Yep.
A developer may need those two parcels to complete that corner.
Right. And again, we could notify every owner of every property here. That's why I'm looking for some guidance.
I guess, given the fact that, you know, that might grow the potential for the community, I guess if we're gonna do it, why not we do the whole TIF boundary?
Okay. Okay, so looking for a, if everybody understands the program now, I'm looking for a motion to authorize outreach.
I do share, just one thing, sorry. I do share Greg's concern with that. So I think somehow we should really boldly put it that we are not trying to move you out of your house. We are not saying, you know, move on, we got a development when we don't. And I don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable that lives in that area either, making them think that, hey, this city's got this going on and they want us out. Just make sure that we put that in a very boldly, boldly, so that they understand that.
Uh huh.
So they're not under the wrong impression.
Yeah. It's, it's full disclosure, but I am concerned that we don't get people saying, what's the city up to now? Sometimes we richly deserve it, like we heard tonight, but I don't want speculation here that, you know, there's something afoot. So what I'd ask for, if, if council wished, would be to, again, this is already permissible per the TIF plan, but would be a motion to endorse this approach to notifying whoever you want us to notify as far as the owners, but also with a direct mail piece to real estate. And we can do other things, like a sign on this gas station property the city owns, but that we would publicize the availability of potential assistance through TIF 13, with projects having to meet the criteria one through three listed, with the addition that any development agreement would provide for pay-as-you-go financing.
That would be a fourth requirement.
And obviously, all the website and everything else that promotes economic development were promoted at, right?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion in that regard to approve, moving forward with the possibility of funding assistance for downtown area commercial projects out of TID 13. Do I have a motion?
Kurt, I'll make a motion to authorize the outreach person, program for TID 13, mail out to the commercial properties and to also mail to the residential properties included in the boundary.
And the realtors?
And the realtors.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding this? And it is pay as you go.
Right.
Just want to make sure, make sure that's highlighted, okay?
We're not giving all the.
No.
Right. Any other discussion? Well, I'm gonna keep you busy. I'm gonna go ahead and have you go on record to do a roll call on this one.
Aye.
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 Jay.
Aye.
I should notice.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, for getting us through that as well. So hopefully we'll help citizens out and the residents and commercial projects and get things moving even more, even faster than what they're moving right now. Number E is gonna be a noise ordinance waiver request for Beach Bash, June 25th, 26th, 2021. And they're looking for the noise ordinance to move it to 11:30 PM at Neshota Beach. I'm looking for a motion to approve that request as submitted. Do I have a motion on that?
Moving along quickly, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Kay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a, any discussion regarding this?
Adam, you're not planning on singing at all during that beach bash?
No, not me. Not with a microphone, at least.
He will be singing, but not with a microphone. We'll go on record. Okay, any other discussion? Because it's a noise ordinance change and a waiver, I'm gonna ask for a roll call, and we know that gentlemen associated with it will probably abstain, so that's okay.
Aye.
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 I should notice. Aye.
I will abstain.
Aye.
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 And we look forward to this event. So let's move to number F, appointment of council representative to the Splashpad Ice Rink Planning Committee to replace Councilmember Wajowski. I'm really looking for anybody who wants to step up and volunteer to be on this. I think, Jay, you're on this committee too, right? And I think the meeting's coming up this Thursday, which again, Greg reminded everybody, citizens can come out to it, anybody on council can come to those meetings as well, but we're looking to have a different council representative. Yes, Kay?
I would like to make a suggestion, since they're voting tomorrow for new council people, that you wait for this until your new people are seated.
You want to table this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Till your new people are seated and you have two new people, you can drain their blood.
So to speak.
I'll, I'll second that. I think it's a good idea. But I'd also like to make a final plea. Adam, I would like you to reconsider. I know there were some confusions, and hopefully we straighten that out, and I think you would make a real contribution to this if you'd reconsider. So just think about that when we vote. Maybe we don't have to vote.
So we're not gonna vote tonight. We're gonna table the decision to replace Mr. Wajowski at the, actually, we won't do that until April 20th, because that's the first meeting with the new council, correct?
And April 20 is typically the.
That's just an orientation meeting?
Is the organizational meeting. Typically, it would then be the first meeting in May, where the council at the tail end of their regular meeting agenda.
Okay, so we'll table it till the first meeting in May then. That's what we'll have to do. In the meantime, Jay, your shoulders are broad, right? Okay, buddy, got this?
Yes.
We'll come out, anybody who wants to come out Thursday and assist in that and learn a little bit about what's going on at the Splashpad, it'd be great. But we'll table that. That's a good recommendation, Kay. Thank you.
Where is that meeting, Mr. President? Six o'clock?
It's right here.
Okay.
Six o'clock on Thursday, I believe. And their gentleman, or the firm that you asked to look at that is coming in to present, correct?
Architecture, yes. He will be here in person. He will, he should have a few slides looking at each of the locations and addressing them. We will be, no guarantees, but we will be looking to the committee to express a preference as to location, or locations if they decide Splashpad should be best in one location, ice skating rink in another. That's.
So it'd be a good meeting if you want to come out and be educated on Thursday, and we can keep Jay company. Okay, let's move on to G, resolution implementing a requirement for wearing masks inside city buildings. We all heard that the governor lifted the mask ordinance, or at least the Supreme Court did. They lifted the mask ordinance as it relates to having to wear them everywhere. But there are county health inspectors who can make a decision in the counties, and there are decisions that could be made within private sectors to still require masks to be in their businesses. And this is a case where it's a city building, and they're looking to see if we should consider waiving that and having that be part of our dress code, if you would, if you come to the city buildings. So I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution, and then we can have discussion on it. And we heard from some citizens earlier, as well as we heard from some citizens in the audience, as well as on the phone. So I need to at least start with the motion, and then we'll have discussions. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance and vote on it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Now we can have discussion.
Could I introduce it briefly?
Sure you can.
It is, it is a revised resolution compared.
Which one are we looking at here, Greg? We got a couple in front of us.
Okay, so one that was handed out tonight, the city resolution is titled Resolution Declaring Public Health Emergency and Requiring Wearing of Masks in City Buildings.
Thank you.
And intended as an attachment to that, but not staple to it, I see, is the Manitowoc County Health Department General Face Covering's proclamation that was issued last Wednesday, right after the Supreme Court ruling. The changes in this, which I'll be happy to address in some detail, I had misspoken in the introductory paragraph. The Supreme Court didn't find the governor violated the Constitution. They found he violated the specific statute on emergency orders, which essentially, the essence of the ruling was, the governor threw actually more than one order for one emergency, was putting in place and trying to, trying to enforce emergency orders that exceeded 60 days. And the statute says, hey, if it goes beyond 60 days to remain valid, it requires legislative action. The court did not find the state can't, doesn't have the authority to issue those orders, but there comes a point where the legislature needs to be involved, and that's where things fell down. So there's the ordinance, or the stat, the resolution in front of you notes that in the first paragraph. Still says in the second, whereas, that it doesn't look like there'll be a new order issued by the governor and approved by the legislature, as far as we know, which would be the right way to do it at the state level. Federal, state, and local agencies remain concerned about the spread of COVID, including the several variants of the virus that have been identified as being in the U.S. and Wisconsin. It notes, as the earlier one did that went out Friday, that legitimate public health authorities, including the U.S. Centers for Disease Control, Wisconsin Department of Health Services, and the Manitowoc County Health Department, which is our health department, there aren't local city health departments in Manitowoc County, all continue to urge the wearing of masks in indoor public places to stem the spread of COVID-19 and its variants. The county health department noted in its proclamation issued last Wednesday that Manitowoc County remains in the midst of a pandemic. They cite the rate of cases, which is a level deemed moderately high by the state. I added that. The city attorney had suggested some more information underscoring the nature of the threat that's being addressed with this. We reference their proclamation regarding face coverings. We go on to say the city of Two Rivers wants to act prudently in exercising precautions consistent with those public health advisories, just for protecting city employees and the public in city-owned and operated buildings under the jurisdiction of the council. Please, however folks vote on this, make no mistake, this isn't about the city trying to extend authority over private property in the community, not on the table here. Council is empowered by statute, as cited there, to declare an emergency and take appropriate measures to protect public health. The city attorney can speak to that. The League of Municipalities has opined that. We have one emergency declaration of record for Two Rivers during the COVID pandemic. That was put forth by my office in March of last year and affirmed by action of the council on March 30th of last year. That does remain in effect. But it was not specific to a mask mandate, a freestanding mask mandate without the governor's order, which we'd operated under since last July. So this does, under the Therefore Be It Resolved section, declare that a COVID-19 pandemic continues to constitute a public health emergency here within our community. Reasonable steps must be taken consistent with the advice of public health authorities, which is the best source I can cite. I know there are contradicting, there's contradicting advice out there. And includes a declaration that cloth face covering, covering both. And includes a declaration that face, that cloth face covering, covering both mouth and nose be required at all times inside of all city buildings under the jurisdiction of the council, including city hall, the community house, other facilities, not including the libraries we've discussed because that's under the statutory control of the library board. Um, added, since this went out on Friday, uh, be it resolved, there are exceptions, and these are exceptions consistent with CDC recommendations. For the first ones, no children under five years are subject to this. No, not required of people who have trouble breathing, people who are unconscious and incapacitated, otherwise unable to remove the face covering. This is straight from the old, the governor's order. Individuals with medical conditions, intellectual or developmental disabilities, mental health conditions, et cetera, that prevent wearing a mask. Circling back to what, things that are city of Two Rivers specific would propose that exclude city employees who are working at their workstations in which they can main at least, maintain at least six foot physical distancing from other person. That's our operating rule right now internally, or when eating or drinking in designated break areas. And it would exclude also, as has been our practice during the governor's order, attendees at private events held at the J.E. Hamilton Community House. All the staff at that facility can impose limits on the number of people at such events and will encourage mask-wearing where practical. If you're having a baby shower, if you're having some other event over there, a volleyball tournament, recent example, this would not restrict private, activity within private rentals. And then I, I think it's useful and it's added in this resolution to have the city manager have the authority to impose additional restrictions or grant additional exceptions only in the case of city employees in their workplaces as deemed appropriate for protection of employees' health, not dealing with the public, but as chief administrative, chief executive officer, day-to-day work rules for employees flow from the city manager's office. And then finally, a provision that it would be effective immediately and remain in effect until terminated either by action of the council or until the general face covering proclamation issued by the county health department last week, uh, is terminated. Enforcement, enforcement would be, as you've witnessed it during the governor's mask order. People haven't been arrested, people haven't been fined. It would represent, if you will, a corporate statement by, uh, this council that the practice of wearing masks in city buildings with these exceptions, consistent with the best advice out there from the legitimate authorities, including our county health department, uh, is, uh, the rule in the city. So I offer that in the interest of protecting, continuing to protect our employees' health and members of the public that use our facilities.
Okay, thank you for, uh, reading, going through all of that. Is there any discussion? We've already got a motion and a second, so, Adam?
I'm not, I'm certainly not in favor, as most of you have already known via email. Um, I don't know that there's really any long-term data effects on mask-wearing, not that people that come in this building necessarily wear it for a long period of time unless you may work here, but the people own the building, the citizens of the city own the building, they're adults, I think they can make their own decisions. I think as a council, the majority of us, at least when we're speaking, certainly don't wear it, which is when you probably should wear it most because you're speaking, you're spewing out droplets. So we kinda defeat that purpose. Uh, I'm not a big masker. Um, I wear it when I have to. I'm not a big fan of it, and I, I wouldn't impose this on anyone else.
Any other discussion?
I, I, I feel like it's, it should be up to this, people who work here, if they want people to wear masks. Um, but I would like, I wonder if you couldn't put like an exit thing. I mean, how do you know when you're not gonna do it anymore? What is your way of?
And the, that, thank, I mean, that's obviously something the council could, uh, add to this if it would help. I mean, that it, frankly, it could be included on each regular meeting agenda with an update as to whether the state of, the state of the situation has changed. What I've got right now is just saying, I'm assuming the county health department, as our relevant local health department, would say, I would hope, they got, they put the proclamation out, hey, this doesn't apply anymore. That got in there, or by action of the council, but if you wanted to designate, help me out, Jack, but
Yeah.
At every, on, on every regular meeting agenda, there would be the opportunity, if the council wishes to take it up, to take action terminating this order?
The council has the discretion to state.
There are some counties and some cities that have chosen to try to extend their local regulatory control legally legitimate. I'm not recommending it policy-wise, to include private properties. Uh, Oshkosh, I think Green Bay had a special council meeting because their local ordinance had, or order had lapsed. Um, there are others, Manitowoc City, whose current mask order is in effect just for city buildings, but will be up to expire or be up for reconsideration at the end of April. Calumet County from going online, uh, only in their county buildings is requiring that some other counties are. This isn't, again, I don't, I don't mean to, I know there's some pretty deep-seated feelings on this issue, don't wanna be insulting or disrespectful for people, to people, but I gotta say, in this building, and I'm, and I'll assure you, our employees aren't unanimous on where they stand on masks either, they're just as diverse in their views as the council and the public you serve, but I would say by and large, we've done pretty darn good at containing it. Uh, I'm gonna choose to listen to our county health director and other folks, knowing that, wow, this, there's a lot of unanswered questions about this thing that we're in. There's ample evidence all around us of people doing it, public and private.
Thank you. Mark?
Um, you know, I know this is a emotional, personal decision. Notice I'm keeping my mask on so I'm not spewing spit, but my microphone is always dry, but I don't think I do that. But, hey, if I have to wear a mask to make somebody else feel safer, and I know me wearing a mask in other events, I go to church every Sunday, everyone in church wears a mask because they feel safer there. And if that encourages people to come and be involved, I suggest we do it, and if we wanna review it again in the future, but let's just, let's make it a mandate as much as we can to encourage. And I'll also tell you, there's no secret, there's certain people who don't wear a mask, and we're not sending the police beef during the worst of the epidemic, they weren't wearing a mask, they just were defiant to, we didn't arrest them, but let's just encourage common sense for our fellow citizens who feel more comfortable. So I suggest we do it.
Any other discussion? Kay?
I oppose, my email said, um, everybody says follow science. Well, if we're gonna follow the silent, science, then we should enact more than just a mask. I mean, obviously, there's other opportunities to track COVID or obtain COVIDs through your eyes and everything, so we should be wearing face shields and we should be wearing rubber gloves and not passing things out and touching everything. I mean, where do you start and stop? It's hard, it's hard to say. Um, I think everybody's adult here, if you don't feel comfortable with a mask, or with a mask, however you wanna look at it, it's. CDC did release a finding, um, if anybody wants, wants that, you can read it, that when you wear a mask, the chances of you not getting cool, or the chances of decreasing catching COVID is 1.8% wearing a mask. I don't find that to be very successful. I mean, it's just something they put out. The other part of it is, um, what do you consider safe? I mean, everybody can come in here and wear, you know, a shirt over their stuff, what does that do versus an N95 mask? I mean, we don't have any, any guidance on what we should be doing, what's safe. I mean, obviously, if a cloth over your mouth is safe, then why do they say we need to have N95 masks? Just as anything else. When you go into an industrial setting and you're spraying paint, there's a certain mask you have to wear not to get paint into your lungs or asbestos. But for this, they say, just cover your mouth and your face and you'll be fine. I don't buy it. I'm sorry. That's my feelings on it. I feel that we shouldn't have to force our views on anybody else. It's your freedom of choice.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Jeff. Any other discussion? We know this is a, um, polarizing situation with this. We're all tired of masks, we're all tired of the pandemic. Uh, I encourage anybody to go out and get their vaccination, by the way. Um, now you can be 16 and up and get vaccinated, so go do it quickly, and hopefully we get herd immunity and we don't have to worry about this at all anymore. Um, I know it's polarizing, and I know there's private businesses, and by the way, be kind to those private businesses that still require masks that be worn. Some of them can only stay open if they have masks being worn by their people and by people coming to visit them, whether it be a nail salon, beauty salon, barber shop, restaurant in some cases. Uh, so please, just because if we may allow this to be mask-free, if you would, please adhere to the private citizens who are trying to keep their businesses afloat and be conscientious of what they have to do to keep their staff safe, their families safe, and their businesses operating. I'm saying that only as a business owner who, for a year, has been telling people, I can't cut your hair unless you wear a mask. Um, and it's been tough. We've heard everything from, you're telling me, you can go somewhere else if you need to, but please be, be conscious of that. So with that said, my editorial's over. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a roll call vote on this. Um, and again, whatever we, whatever way we vote, I would expect all of the citizens out there to understand it is polarizing, we know that. If you agree with it, great. If you disagree with it, great, you have your right. Um, but even if you walk in this building, let's be at least respectful of the people who work here. Um, if you don't wear a mask, at least be six foot away from them, um, and get vaccinated so you can feel much more comfortable. Uh, but don't draw any judgment as to, uh, whether or not they should, or they're demanding you to do it. Just be respectful of each other. Roll call.
I didn't hear you talk. Yes, or aye, whatever you say.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Aye.
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 Oh.
And I can make a recommendation that we put this on the docket, and I don't know if that was part of the motion, but I'd like to have this in the docket every time we get together as city council, so that if we can address it. If all of a sudden we're at 80% vaccinations, we don't need to wait for the city of Manitowoc or the Manitowoc Health Department to tell us to re-vote on this.
I'll state for the record, and the clerk can note it, that although it wasn't part of the motion, this will be included on every regular meeting agenda for so long as it's in effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I, I should mention, uh, this policy or practice is in, can, can in no way interfere with folks' ability to come to the polls tomorrow and vote. And, uh, so, uh, the city clerk pointed that out to me from a discussion with various clerks, and we don't wanna get into denying people their constitutional rights because of a disagreement.
And by the way, the reason I wanted to keep it on there too, is we're gonna, back to Kay's point, we're gonna have a new council in about two weeks, right?
Well, this next council meeting is my last.
Right, so in May, the first council meeting we have, we could be voting on this again, the makeup could be different, and the situation could be different. Warm weather's coming back. I thought what we did last year by not making a mask mandate at the beach was smart, or being flexible with our events, so hopefully we'll be in good shape again to be able to do that.
It'll be on the agenda for April 19th and every subsequent meeting.
Thank you, Kay.
Mr. President? Yes? I wonder if, that, on your comment you made about proactive, and I wonder if we couldn't, Greg, help the community a little bit because there's fragment of information. Where can you get a shot and, and maybe take initiative and publish some of the locations?
We, uh, we did do a Facebook post today, and it was shared to the Parks and Rec site as well.
I didn't see that.
Uh, that, noting, today's the first day that anybody over 16 in the state of Wisconsin can get a free vaccination, and it noted all of the locations that Lisa could find. Top of the list, Into Rivers, you can get them at the Aurora Medical Center, the medicine shop, and now at Walgreens, Into Rivers, they're being offered. And of course, county health, Holy Family, and about seven or eight other locations, not too far down the road in Manitowoc. So again, we're not, uh, proselytizing about the idea of whether you should get a vaccination or not, but for those people in the community that are interested, uh, there's broad availability now.
Can we continue that each week?
We will, yeah.
Okay, can we move to number 12 for information only? Uh, polling tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Uh, seven to eight, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Council regular meeting is April 19th at six o'clock. Council work session is April 20th, 6th, at six o'clock, and we do have the April 20th meeting, but that's not a general meeting for public, right? That's the re, that's the new council going through and, uh, being indoctrinated?
Yeah, public meeting, but it's the annual organizational meeting. The council members draw names for their seating locations for the coming year, um, elect a council president and vice president for the coming year, and act on a resolution setting forth the regular order of business for regular meetings. Yep.
I, I just didn't see it on here, so I wanna make sure that
No, thank you, that's a good reminder. Also, uh, as Mark mentioned, uh, Personnel and Finance does meet at, uh, 5:00 on Wednesday of this week.
Do we need a closed session tonight?
No, do not require that.
Okay, we're gonna skip that. Boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, we're feeling good about that tonight. Thank you. Uh, let's go to, uh, I'm looking for then a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Darla. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Enjoy. Thank you, guys, for a great night.
Thank you.